Thank you. Welcome to the first hearing of the committee's inquiry into the impacts of harmful pornography on mental, emotional and physical health. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation, the traditional custodians on the land on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name is Sarah Kane and I'm the Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn off your mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today, however it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Welcome and thank you so much for making the time to give evidence. Could each of you please, starting from my left, please state your name and position, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Good morning, everyone. My name's Megan Kelly and I am the Executive Director with the Department of Education and I look after the Curriculum Directorate.
Thank you.
Through you, Chair. Ms. Kelly, would you be able to bring the microphone a little bit closer? I'm finding it a bit hard to hear you.
Did you need me to repeat any of that?
No, I think that's fine, but would you take an oath or an affirmation?
Yes. So I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Paul Carroll. I'm the Executive Director of Curriculum at the New South Wales Education Standards Authority. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And would either of you like to start by making a short statement?
I think we're fine. I just acknowledge also that we're on the lands of the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation and pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging.
And I'm the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So thank you for being here today and for opening up our witnesses for the day. Could you explain to me a little bit about the differences in roles of NESA and the Department of Education and how you work with public schools and private schools or independent schools?
The NESA is responsible for the three school sectors. It is a regulatory authority. In my role, I look after the development of the curriculum, the New South Wales syllabuses which are being reformed at the moment. We also are engaged in the registration of schools and also teacher accreditation. So they're the main functions that NESA is involved in.
And so the New South Wales Department of Education works with New South Wales Public Schools and our role is to implement the syllabuses that NESA deliver and to provide that support for teachers to implement those syllabuses effectively. So professional learning, advice and resources to be used in the classroom.
Thank you. One of the things noting in the submission, and in the submissions, is a lot of discussion about respectful relationships education. I wondered if you could perhaps go through for us the different types of content in the syllabus? And I guess, I'm guessing that's quite different across the stages. So perhaps if you could give us an overview of whatever that respectful relationship education looks like throughout the stages of the education system?
Sure. There are probably two areas of the curriculum that I'm focusing on. One is the respectful relationships component, which is in the PDHPE syllabus. But also wellbeing and safety are part of the PDHPE syllabus. In terms of the matters under discussion with the inquiry, the other areas of the curriculum that impact is in terms of technology and the technology syllabuses, given that students, their experience online and offline. You're quite correct. What we've tried to do in establishing the PDHPE, Continuum of Learning from K to 10, is to make sure that all the materials are age and stage appropriate. We have a situation where even younger students are taught how to keep themselves safe online and in online and offline environments. They're also in a situation where students learn what is appropriate behaviour at each stage. So in terms of matters such as pornography itself, we certainly don't address that in the early primary years. We do talk, however, about safety online being an upstander in terms of one's behaviour. All these matters are interrelated, so consent is another area of the curriculum that is developed in an age and stage appropriate way as they go through the years. By the time we reach years seven and eight and years nine and 10, certainly we're more, we're much clearer in terms of the direction. So the examples that we have for pornography relate to content points about being safe online, about appropriate representation, understanding the relationship with consent and also the way in which individuals should interact with one another.
Can I ask a follow-up on that? So quite a lot of the research that we've read in the submissions from a range of stakeholders talks about sort of first exposure to pornography, being quite young, being a third of kids having incidental exposure between 10 and 13 years. How does that, and I note what you said, Dr. Carroll, about when, I guess, more explicit discussion, I guess, of those issues comes a bit later. But I just wondered, so what is it at that age more particularly are we telling children who might just be playing Minecraft or whatever and have something pop up? And I wondered if there had been changes or discussion amongst, you know, syllabus experts about whether we should be considering something different, given that that seems to be such a young age?
In terms of, we've only just really developed the new syllabus.
Right.
So that's been a reformed piece of work. The last syllabus was done in 2018. I think we released last year or the year before, I think, the PDHPE syllabus. In terms of the work that we did and as part of curriculum reform, we're guided by the fact that we need to have a strong evidence base for what we do. We've worked very closely with the Department of Health and the E-Safety Commissioner in terms of looking at ways in which we can represent things appropriately for students. In terms of the development, I might just go through a bit of a progression because I've got some notes on that.
That'll be helpful. Thank you.
So in Stage Two, students learn how to identify unsafe-
Sorry, and can you just, sorry, remind me, sorry, Stage Two is what years?
Stage Two is Years Three and Four.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. And then Stage Four-
Yeah, upwards, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. So in Stage Two, students are taught to identify unsafe situations in online environments and describe how to seek help. So that's appropriate for a student of that age. They identify respectful digital citizenship behaviour, and these are just content points that I'm reading directly. And again, that sets the framework in which students start then to understand an online environment is a place where there are dangers, but also it's an area where one needs to be responsible. When we go to Stage Three, we identify and apply strategies to contribute to safety in online environments as well, describe and demonstrate ways to report negative, harmful or unsafe situations to trusted adults. And in matters such as pornography, sometimes that's something that students may not ordinarily feel comfortable with, but if they're taught to be able to seek a trusted adult and to be able to describe things that are unsafe to them, then I think there's some benefit. They describe and they demonstrate and explain how respectful and responsible digital citizenship, citizen behaviours enhance online safety. And then we move on to Stage Four and Stage Five, which I said previously is more specific in terms of its reference to upstandard behaviour, things that are appropriate online, protective strategies that students can adopt as well.
Can I ask, with regards to how that syllabus is delivered across different types of schools? So is that the same? Does it change in delivery in a public school, in a private school, in an independent school? What's mandatory and what's optional with regards to how schools deal with that?
Both the outcomes and content of the syllabus, we describe them now as essential content, which means effectively they are mandatory. They need to be taught across schools. We are conscious that across the sectors, different schools have different ethoses and certainly the materials can be taught appropriate to that ethos, but it needs to be taught. And we went to a lot of trouble to make sure that the language we were using in the syllabus didn't water down what we wanted students to learn, but also that it could be taught appropriately across the range of schools that exist in the state. And, you know, from a very pragmatic point of view, we were very cautious with the language as well because there is sensitivity around the issue of pornography and, you know, I'd hate it misrepresented that we were teaching students in Stage Four or Stage Five or even younger to engage with pornography. So we've been very careful with the language we've used, but we've been more explicit with the syllabus. We do actually have the example of pornography twice in the Stage Four and the Stage Five syllabus, which didn't exist previously. So we're giving a very clear steer to what we are expecting schools to teach.
I've got one more and then I'll pass over and see if my colleagues have more questions. I've certainly got lots more. I wondered with, two things actually, would it be possible for us on notice to get that syllabus content?
Absolutely.
That would be really helpful. Thank you.
And I might, I'll get you a copy of the syllabus itself, but also some annotations that I've got as a tab to that.
That'd be great. Thank you. I'd appreciate that. And my last question on this part is, in terms of delivery of that content, one of the things that kept coming across was in the research that we've received is that young people actually are looking to have conversations, they really want to have conversations, but that as adults, we're like, hmm, it's a bit hard. What training and how do we deliver that? What training do we give teachers or whoever else? Or do we bring people into schools? How do we deliver that content?
I might say a couple of things and then throw to Ms. Kelly. Just one of the things that we've done with the reformed syllabuses is we've developed a suite of teaching advice. And particularly in this area of PDHPE, we've been very conscious of the fact that there are matters that need to be taught that are quite sensitive and people, adults particularly, can feel uncomfortable addressing those. So what we've tried to do with the, both with the syllabus and with the teaching advice is give some direction to teachers, but also some permission to teachers to actually address these issues and address them in a way that is appropriate. So that's from the curriculum point of view. Ms. Kelly?
Yeah, so in addition to what's in the syllabus and that support that NESA provide, we also provide that professional learning and have been doing for some time and giving teachers tools and resources to enable them to address these topics. Dr. Carroll's right, it is sensitive and so our teachers do need to build their confidence around these sorts of issues. And so that's further work for us to do as we support the implementation of these syllabuses and address these issues, is that professional learning that gives them that confidence, enables them to have the conversations, but also to do that in partnership with their families and communities in schools as well. So it's not, it's about building those relationships with parents and giving them the tools and the skills to be able to have those tricky conversations at home. Yeah, so there's lots of capability building, I think, that needs to be underway. It is definitely there and we have that advice, but we know that we can strengthen that now with these new syllabuses to provide that framework for us.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
Thank you. Thank you both for being here today. I note in your submission, you discuss the Safeways Programme, which indicates children aged eight to nine years with high levels of exposure to an engagement with pornography. Do you have any advice as to how children of eight and nine are accessing pornography and high levels of pornography?
I don't have any specific advice on that. What I could talk to is the response that would occur at school should an issue like that be raised, if we become aware of a student who has had that sort of exposure. So we would deal with that from a wellbeing and a health perspective. We would report any of the concerns that we have to our Child Wellbeing Unit and that Child Wellbeing Unit would then assess the severity of that concern and then provide advice to schools about what those next steps are.
How typically would a primary school become aware that children were accessing pornography?
Again, I don't have any specific details on that. I guess it would be, you know, students disclosing those matters. Often when they've got a trusted relationship with their classroom teacher, they talk about who the safe people are that they can have conversations with. That may in fact be that classroom teacher and so that would be an example where those matters could be raised and in the context of the teaching and the learning in the classroom as well.
And I wonder if you could outline, I understand from a number of the submissions, the impact that pornography is having on children abusing other children and children behaving in an abusive manner to teachers. What sort of issues are we seeing in schools that are caused by exposure of children to pornography?
I guess it's difficult at times to attribute behaviour to anything in particular. And so, you know, as much as we try to understand what the triggers might be and what might be sitting underneath those, we really do want to take more of a proactive approach in giving students the skills to be able to manage those responses and their behaviour in a much more appropriate way. So the frameworks and the guidelines that we've got around behaviour in our schools would apply in those instances.
Sorry, are you saying that you don't think there's a connection between growing levels of pornography use by young children and sexual abuse of children on children?
No. I know that the evidence is telling us that there is an issue there, absolutely, and so that's part of the work that we are doing. It might be an appropriate time to speak to the Respectful Relationships Education Programme that we are delivering as part of the work of the team that I lead. So that programme is funded through the Commonwealth Consent and Respectful Education funding there, as well as New South Wales Primary Prevention into, sorry, just pulling up my notes here so I can get the details right, Prevention of Domestic Family and Sexual Violence. So in that programme, we are looking at how we can support effective teaching around these matters to address those harmful effects and to take a preventative approach actually to it so that we can stop some of those behaviours from emerging, I guess, as a result of that exposure.
I understand that you, in the process of curriculum renewal and that the PDHPE syllabus is relatively new, how long has the new syllabus been operating in schools?
It's not to be fully implemented. I think it's 26 or 27. I'll take that on notice. I think it's 27, but schools are able to begin. Anecdotally, there are a number of schools I know have begun to be early adopters of the curriculum, but effectively it's either that date, 26, 27, but I'll give the specific date to you.
So currently, there would be no explicit teaching about pornography in high schools in New South Wales necessarily?
We also have designed and we're implementing another programme, a course, for our Year 11 and 12 students, which is called Life Ready. So that's a 25-hour course that all of our New South Wales Public School students engage with. And so there is content in there that is addressing issues around respectful relationships, consent, coercive control and pornography is addressed in that course.
If the median age of exposure to pornography is 13, is a course in Year 11 and Year 12 coming too late?
Not if it's building on the syllabus work in Stages Three right through to Stage Six.
But is that currently in place?
In terms of, the 2018 syllabus, which is currently being taught, doesn't explicitly reference pornography in the examples. It does still take the approach and it's, you know, I've got to say, the 2018 syllabus, I think, was quite strong, takes a strength-based approach to being proactive. But things like, in the current syllabus, students would still learn about factors that influence sexual behaviour and the understanding of sexual engagement. So they're there, but what I would say, we've probably guided by the evidence and certainly the advice of the E-Safety Commissioner and the Department of Health, we've been a bit braver this time and made sure that we include the example of pornography in terms of image-based. So what I would say is, students would currently be learning it. We probably haven't been brave enough in the past to explicitly say pornography because, again, for a range of reasons, probably like a lot of adults, it's a sensitive issue and you don't want to go down that path. But, so it does exist currently, but I'd say it's certainly much far greater strength in the new syllabus.
When you were developing the new syllabus, are you aware of any research or any evidence which suggests that this problem can be addressed solely by curriculum changes?
I would say there is very little evidence to say it can just be the curriculum doing the heavy lifting. There are, you know, and in terms of the work that we've done and what the evidence shows is, there are multiple levers that are in play. So it's not just, there isn't a silver bullet to address the issue of pornography. The reality is pornography is part of a broader suite of things that are happening in online and offline environments and you need to address those range of issues. So within the curriculum, we have tried to make sure that we're addressing issues of consent particularly, because that's part of it. We are trying to make sure that gender-based violence is a problem and it's a real problem that needs to be addressed. So there are multiple ways in which the syllabus has tried to address these matters, but I would say, as I said, there is no silver bullet. There are so many levers at play that the curriculum is one part of it, but there are many other parts of society. Things like the notion of behaviours online in terms of misogynistic behaviour, that's something that is well beyond the control of a curriculum, but the curriculum can lay the foundation to outline that those sort of things are detrimental to people's wellbeing and health.
Last question and then I might hand to my colleague. BYOD, to what extent does the fact that kids at school have access to devices make it more difficult to control them accessing pornography?
So in the New South Wales Department of Education, any devices that are brought to schools do have to connect through our system and our ITD structure. And so there are, you know, filters in place, there are firewalls in place that would prevent them from accessing materials of that nature at school.
And you're aware that the first thing a lot of kids do when they get to school is work out how to break the filter each day?
And aren't they clever? Yeah. But those firewalls are pretty strong and the cyber safety and security aspects of the work of the department is very strong as well.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Con.
Thanks so much for the evidence you're providing today. There's been a fair few questions already about the syllabus specifically relating to respectful relationships and consent, but I'm also interested in what's being taught specifically about sexual development. And in the written submission, you've helpfully pointed out the Children First framework that identified that a lack of access to reliable information about sexual development can result in young people turning to online social media content and pornography for information. What's the framework and the syllabus currently for that specific information about sexual development and sexual behaviour?
In terms of, and I'll take that on notice because there's a bit of specificity in it, but if I speak generally, the focus of the syllabus tends to look at healthy manifestations of sexuality, sexual expression. The whole notion of respectful relationships is predicated on the fact that we're trying to teach students to know about their responsibility for their own wellbeing, but their responsibility for the wellbeing of others. And that is manifested in the behaviours that students may engage in. And so within the syllabus, we teach what are appropriate behaviours. And also we teach the fact that there are a range of things external to the student, things like online environments, which really have an impact upon the way in which students understand the world in which they live and the way in which they behave. So as I say, I'll send you the specific details in terms of what the syllabus says, but that's the general framework in which we operate.
Thank you. And I appreciate this is going to be taken on notice as well, but there's a specific recommendation in the written submission about providing access to evidence-based information and advice about sexual behaviours for children and young people. We've had an extensive discussion about schools and school curriculum, but I'm interested in understanding what other information the New South Wales Government provides that young people can access online or in the community in a part of public education.
One of the things that we do do is work closely with other government agencies, so DCJ, Health, and so accessing their resources is a part of that provision. And also working with our academic experts in the field. We know, you know, we need to understand what the current research is telling us to develop sort of that advice and materials for our students as well. Yeah, so there's a range of things that we want to do there. We also need to listen to our students and, you know, what their lived experiences are. And so as we're developing materials, it's hearing from them and co-designing and testing it with our students before we roll it out more broadly. Yeah, so it's sort of a multi-pronged approach, I guess, to, you know, where we're getting that evidence base from both state and nationally, as well as the work that we do with our own students too.
And are you able to provide us on notice with some of that work that already exists?
There is some, yes, we can for the work that already exists and then there's a body of work to come as well.
Could I just add to that, just in terms of the evidence that we used in terms of developing the syllabus? We use the International Technical Guidance on Sexuality Education from UNESCO, Pornography, Young People and Preventing Violence Against Women by AWEACH, Respectful Relationships Education is part of the National Approach to Preventing Gender-Based Violence. Again, that was AWEACH and the National Plan to End Violence Against Women and Children 2022-2032, the Department of Social Services, the New South Wales Sexual Violence Plan 2022 to 2027, the New South Wales Domestic and Family Violence Plan 2022 to 2027 and the Family and Domestic and Sexual Violence from the Australian Institute of Health and Welfare. So that's the evidence base that we're using.
Thank you. That's helpful. And my last question, it's actually a question for Health, but you're representing the government's submission today, so I appreciate this will be taken on notice. But I'm specifically interested in sexual assault services and I've worked with a number of those practitioners previously who were really excellent and provided really important service. The written submission says that despite having an extensive network, New South Wales Sexual Assault Services experienced significant demand and waitlists. So on notice to Health, could you advise the committee what the barriers are to expanding those services and what would be needed to address the unmet demand and waitlists for sexual assault services at the moment?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a question from Mr. D. Adam, who's online.
G'day. Thank you. Look, I wanted to, I think, Mr. Cahill, you've said a number of times that this is a sensitive area of the curriculum. And I wanted to ask Ms. Kelly about whether there's any capacity for parents to opt their children out of this content? Is there an ability for parents to opt their children out of this content?
Yeah, so it is, it can be controversial content in some schools, in some communities. It does really rely on strong relationships between families and school leaders, so our principals, our classroom teachers. And so when parents have concerns about some of this content and it being taught, the first thing they should do is have that conversation with the school, with the classroom teacher or with the leadership of the school. And in most cases, when that occurs, those issues and concerns can be addressed. They can request an exemption from curriculum and there is a process that can be undertaken to do that. But because curriculum is mandatory, so it has been, you know, it's based on evidence, it was widely consulted, it's age-appropriate, we would expect that students will continue to participate in lessons around this content. So yes, they can in most instances, though we can work that through with the families and address those concerns and that's the best place for that to occur.
Given the content is protective of children, do you think it's an issue that in some circumstances, some children may not have access to this content because their parents for one reason or other choose to opt them out?
At this point, because the syllabus content is mandatory, students are participating in those lessons. Where we can make some considerations is around the kind of resources that we might use. So there is some scope for us to adapt the resources, but not to, not address that content because it is mandatory content.
If I can just add, with the essential content, we did go to a great deal of trouble, while I acknowledge that the material can be sensitive, went to a lot of trouble- While, while I acknowledge that the, the material can be sensitive, went to a lot of trouble to make sure that it would be teachable across every school. So as I said before, sensitive to the school's ethos, but also appropriate to the needs of students. But as I say, and Ms. Kelly said, the, the content is essential and therefore needs to be taught.
Does the department collect any data on, uh, on when students are opted out of content?
So the process that we have in place, uh, requires a parent to write to, um, the Department of Education. So the secretary has, um, delegated that, um, decision-making down to, to me. And so a parent will make a submission, um, based on, generally it's on religious grounds, uh, about why they wouldn't want their students participating in those lessons. And then, um, that, uh, that is considered. We've been using that process now for just over 12 months, and in that time, we haven't had any students opting out. Thank you. Mr. D Adam, is that, yep?
That's fine, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we've reached the end of our time this morning. Again, uh, thank you for, um, being here and also representing, uh, the government as well. I think Ms. Carter wants to put one more question on notice for you.
I wonder, I'm conscious that you're, um, education rather than health. I note in the submission discussing the safe ways and the new street services, that, um, a key priority of these services is to, um, address children and young people's access to pornography. If it was possible to have more information about how that was achieved, uh, I'd be very grateful, thank you.
Thank you. So we have asked you several questions and you've taken some information on notice. The secretary will be in touch, and there may also be supplementary questions, but we thank you very much for appearing today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we might begin our next session. If we could start with getting you all to state your name, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation, and I might start with Associate Professor Lim in the room.
Hi, I'm Associate Professor Megan Lim from the Burnett Institute. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, and Professor Green.
Thank you. I am Professor Lilia Green from Edith Cowan University School of Arts and Humanities. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, and Ms Woodley?
I'm Giselle Woodley and I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Would any of you like to make a short opening statement? Yes, Associate Professor Lim?
Thank you. My submission and evidence today are based on extensive mixed methods research into pornography with young people, parents and educators. In addressing the impact of pornography, a key consideration is the difference between accidental exposure particularly in young children and intentional consumption of pornography. Accidental exposure among young children is best addressed with a combination of education, technological and parenting based strategies. There is a reasonable levels of support for this in the community, but there are also significant concerns about the impact of some more restrictive strategies on privacy and autonomy. Restrictive strategies are unlikely to be very effective in preventing deliberate access to pornography, but they may prevent access by young children. Deliberate consumption of pornography among teenagers and adults can be a positive and pleasurable experience, but it is also often harmful. Addressing these harms requires comprehensive and inclusive sexuality and relationships education for young people and adults that goes beyond the simple message that porn is fake, to address social norms, consent, gender and sexuality. There are few education programmes focusing on porn that have been developed and evaluated, which is why we co-designed the GIST with young people and educators, and we're currently seeking funding to implement it more broadly, and I've tabled a document that gives you a little bit of information about the GIST if you are interested in learning more.
Thank you very much. And Professor Green or Ms Woodley, have you got opening statement?
Yes, we do. Did you want to start, Lilia?
No, no, I'll let you give yours.
So Edith Cowan University has been awarded over $6 million of Australian Research Council Australian Government funding to research children's lives online since 2002, and we conduct ongoing research with teens exploring their digital sexual practices, and our submission was based on qualitative interviews with teenagers aged 12 to 17 and their parents to explore their perceptions around pornography as well as their experiences of their relationships and sexuality education. So this research occurred during a timely period where discussions around age assurance and age verification technologies have accelerated and also consent has become a mandatory component of the curriculum. As such, teens were hyper aware of impacts of porn such as the lack of consent depicted on screen, gender stereotypes and aggressive depictions of sex. So teens also recognised benefit to accessing pornography, which filled a gap in education not covered in school and most home environments such as pleasure, queer sex and specifics of sexual intercourse as well. Some teens sought ethical sources of pornography and depictions of mutual pleasure, but concerningly teens' experiences of education around pornography were lacking considerably or were non-existent. And teens overwhelmingly recognised that to combat any potentially detrimental impacts of pornography, education is key. If education was administered, it was far too late occurring years after teens had first encountered porn, and teens also noted their educated discomfort around these topics. In the face of a social media band which will impact a media channel that provides so many teens with information about sex, now more than ever we need to resource relationships and sexuality education on multiple levels including education around pornography, so teens are able to process, digest and critically consume sexual content around them.
Thank you. Professor Green?
Thank you. I think Giselle's summarised the overview there that we put into our submission.
Okay. Thank you. I wondered if I could start with a question that, I've got a whole list of questions here about research methods and whatnot, but I guess my overarching question is this difference between accidental viewing of porn and deliberate? And I think, Associate Professor Lim, you spoke about different approaches. I just, we seem to assume that it's all, it feels like we're having a discussion about accidental, but there is this also deliberate aspect as well. And we also seem to be presuming that it's all negative and that we need to stop access. Can you maybe expand a bit more on what you were saying in your opening statement? And I'd also like a response from Ms Woodley and Professor Green as well.
Sure. Yeah, accidental viewing does tend to occur before deliberate viewing, and generally it is a fairly negative experience for most children at that age that it occurs, whereas deliberate or intentional viewing, you know, people are usually doing it for a reason. They have motivations to do it and often have a positive and pleasurable experience. This applies for teenagers and adults as well. And no, I don't believe it's all harmful always. I think there's pretty clear evidence that there can be some major harms for some people and some of the time, but it also provides a positive experience for a lot of people.
And just before I go to Edith Cowan researchers, your survey which you've conducted over time, has that had the same questions in it? For example, first incidental exposure, because I think it's some of your research that says 10 to 13, I'm not sure, but has that been consistent over time since you've been doing it the last 10 years? Have you got sort of that longitudinal comparison on all of your questions?
Yes, not on all questions. The pornography, we have been asking about that, I think there's been a few years where we haven't separated accidental and intentional viewing.
Right.
But what we found when we've looked at trends over time is there hasn't been a significant change in the age of exposure or the frequency of exposure in the last 10 years.
Okay, so the last 10 years, there hasn't been something that's happened online that's meant that there's been more than there was when you started? Okay, thank you very much. Edith Cowan researchers?
Thank you, yes. Well, we do our research talking to teens in person and also in focus groups. We also talk with younger teens, that is the case with Professor Lim's work. So I think our youngest teen in the most recent research looking at whether children feel they're harmed by pornography was 11 or so. We call them the pre-teens, any child 13 or under. So they're much closer to when they often first were to see pornography in terms of age. The other thing is that when we were talking to children about pornography, they didn't really differentiate between what adults call sexting and sexual images that are part of other content. And so the things that were coming sort of unexpected and unawares tended to be things like dick pics or what teens call nudes. And so for many people, their first, or many children, their first experience of, as it were, real sexual images as opposed to the soft sex that you might see in advertising and suchlike would be an unsolicited dick pic. And in this case, it isn't necessarily older people, but it could be, but when I say older people, it might be a 12 year old sending a dick pic to a 10 year old. So there's a whole conversation that is missing at the moment. One of the problems is that the children concerned don't necessarily feel able to talk to adults they trust about these issues because they worry that their access to media will be taken away or will be severely restricted. So they end up talking to each other. And whilst there has some strength in this and they build relationships and mutual trust in turning to their friends about these issues, it means that they don't get the perspectives that they might otherwise be able to get from talking to an adult that's trained, sympathetic, empathetic and able to give them a bigger picture on these issues as we know relationships and sexuality educators can do. But I'll hand over to Giselle because she's our specialist RSE person and also did the interviewing with the children.
Thank you. Ms Woodley, you seemed to be mute.
The only thing that I would add to that is that whether deliberate or accidental is that for the pre-teens, for the young teens, their conceptualisations of sex were quite warped if pornography was their main source of information. So for instance, we did have one pre-teen who, because we looked at pornography in a range, in the context of a range of harms to see where pornography sat in terms of concerns for both teenagers and parents. And for some teens, this was quite low on the priority list. But one, for an example, one pre-teen that we spoke to said that their biggest fear was someone doing ass porn to them, a stranger in an alley, and this was an example of how pornography had shaped both their fears and their conceptualisation of sex without any other information to supplement that, and to us that was concerning.
Yeah. I've got one last question because I'm sure the rest of the participants here do as well. And this is to Edith Cowan. You note that access to age appropriate, evidence based information around sex and sexuality, you talk about it as a human right, including for children. How do you propose to, that balance is struck between the protections that we might want to put in place for those age groups and the rights to information and education?
Do you have an effect, Lilia?
Sure. Look, I believe this has been addressed by General Comment Five, that was an elaboration of the Declaration of the Convention of the Rights to the Child, and I'll take that on notice, but I believe it is General Comment Five, where there was a specific focus on children's rights for sexual information. And at the time that that was written, which again I believe was 2003, the General Comment was addressing children's rights for, to information about diverse sexualities in the sense that it had been perceived that children that didn't have a majority heteronormative perspective or sexuality often felt alienated and potentially at risk as a result of not seeing how they were feeling reflected in any of the educational or other information available to them. So this was put forward by the committee and eventually endorsed and adopted as an elaboration. There it very carefully does differentiate between relative to the capacity of the child to understand and their relative age, but effectively what it's saying is that it is inappropriate and not helpful to a full understanding of children's rights to imagine that an eight year old has exactly the same need for information as an 18 or as a 17 year old. And consequently, one has to take into account a child's age, stage, interest and their own awareness of these issues when tailoring education for them and when allowing them to have a say in their future and the education and what they want to know.
Thank you for that. I might pass on to my colleague, Ms Carter.
Thank you all for being here. My first question is to the researchers from Edith Cowan, and in terms of accidental exposure to pornography. I note that in your submission you indicate that some teens mentioned that their first exposure had been pornography pop-up advertisements appearing on their school computers. Is that from talking to teens exclusively in Western Australia or is that across Australia? Can you give us some more information about that?
Did you want to take that, Lilia?
No, because you did the interviews, so you'll probably be the student.
So we did have interest from a couple of teens around Australia, but we ended up keeping our data to Western Australia because we wanted to favour face-to-face interviews, although a couple of interviews did occur via Zoom. And yes, a number of teens advised that they had first accessed pornography from school pop-ups, freaking out as well because they saw the pop-ups come up and thought they were going to face significant consequences. But they also shared that some of their schools had used filtering software, internet filtering software to prevent that happening as well, but also internet filtering software was also preventing access to important websites and resources that they needed for their studies as well.
Okay, thank you. And I think you indicated that what we might call sexting is perhaps often first exposure. In terms of accidental exposure, what information do you have about other pathways for accidental exposure to pornography?
In terms of the accidental exposure to pornography, it was mostly pop-ups either at school or at home in terms of the gaming pop-ups. Sometimes there was a game that looked a bit innocuous or innocent and teens had clicked on that. Or teens also, yeah, mostly search terms, but for the most part I would say the pre-teens were looking up content deliberately and looking in, putting in search terms such as cute girls or naked girls or breasts and things like that.
Okay, thank you. Associate Professor Lim, oh, sorry, yes?
Sorry, sorry, I just wanted to add that there's two forms of accidental. So the accidental exposure from the teens that actually saw it accidentally is to be differentiated from the exposure that sometimes they are deliberately shown material they've never seen before because an older child will think it's funny to watch their reaction and will then make fun of them or will. So in some cases, it's really an example of interpersonal bullying which has significant overtones of image-based sexual harassment and abuse.
And are there overtones of grooming in that, Professor Green?
Well, not necessarily, not, I mean certainly there can be, and we know that's a known technique for groomers and paedophiles to desensitise children and attempt to make it normal for them. But often, as I, as we indicated, it can be a slightly older child who really, when I say isn't old enough to know better, you know, we obviously treat a 12 year old doing this in a very different category from a 22 year old, but this is often the situation. A 12 year old may be the person that then, you know, not necessarily an older sibling, but it may be an older sibling's friend, you know, and they're being inappropriate and also potentially damaging. But the best way to protect against those sorts of things is, in our opinion and in the opinion of the teens who could now look back on it, was education and for them not to leave so much information in the hands of children who don't know better how to handle it.
Thank you. Associate Professor Lim, do you have anything to add to the issue of accidental exposure?
No, I guess just, I would also consider accidental exposure to be, a child hears a word, they don't know what it means and they Google it.
Yeah, yeah. If, perfect world, crystal ball, if it was possible to delay accidental exposure, do you think that would have an impact on the age of likely intentional exposure to pornography?
Yeah, we don't have any clear evidence on that because the studies haven't been done, but I suspect that yes, it possibly would.
Yeah, and you gave evidence that often intentional exposure to pornography is pleasurable for the person. In terms in particular of children intentionally accessing, have you done any work, are you aware whether, while it might be pleasurable for that teen or pre-teen, negative impacts that may be having in terms of their attitude to consent, their attitude of what a sexual relationship should look like, consent, choking practices, all of those things?
Absolutely. Yeah, we've definitely spoken to people who are like older teenagers or young adults who've looked back on their younger years potentially and noted that they acquired different attitudes or assumptions from that. That's the way we've been able to get the evidence from people who've kind of learned and looked back on their own behaviour, yes. And addiction also being something that people have noted that while it's enjoyable, it becomes a bit, yeah, compulsive.
So, last question, any evidence as to what age addictions to porn may start?
No, I haven't seen that evidence.
Okay, thank you.
Dr Coog?
Thank you. Thanks so much for making time to give evidence today. Earlier on, there was a mention that the current syllabus or formal education for young people in terms of their access to pornography often is delivered too late, that it can be up to years after people have accessed pornography. In your view, when should explicit mention of pornography in sexual education start?
Yeah, that's a difficult question. I think people are, parents and teachers are reluctant to tell children about pornography if they think that they haven't heard about it, but what we found is that, yeah, parents especially are delaying too long in talking to their children and assuming that they haven't seen it. I think there's, you know, with younger children, it's definitely can be framed around, you know, things that you've seen online that might bother you. Yeah, I don't know exactly what the age would be, that it's appropriate to start using the word porn for those who aren't aware of what it is, but yeah.
I was just, I'm pausing in case either of our witnesses from Edith Cowan wanted to respond as well.
I think Ms Woodley's indicating, yes.
Yeah, I would, we did actually ask teens specifically about this, and teens relayed that around 10, I would say on average was their ideal age to start talking about these issues. But keeping in mind that some of the teens that we spoke to had access pornography at eight or nine, so 10's also for some teens too late. But really, it's really context specific, it's really age and stage, it's developmentally appropriate, really depends on the young person themselves. But I would say as a general rule, the teens that we spoke to relayed that 10 was sort of a great time before the likelihood of them having received images without consent and without having access to content, and they would have preferred to be equipped and know what it was before they had seen. A lot of teens we spoke to didn't know what they were looking at when they saw it because they had had no introduction, no, no discussion, nothing about it. So for some teens, that without that consent, that was what was more distressing.
I had two more questions if I may, Chair. For Professor Lim, you've tabled this document about the GIST programme. Has that been evaluated and what evidence have you got to support?
Yeah, we've done a trial in 10 schools around Victoria and an evaluation of that and found quite positive results. We asked, we got qualitative feedback which was almost all positive. We also were able to show that there were some increases in knowledge around sexual, sexuality and sexual behaviour and relationships, and there was no change in how frequently people viewed pornography, which is what we wanted to see essentially, that it didn't encourage people to see, to view more pornography.
And my last question, if I may, Chair, I wanted to give all of you, if you'd like, an opportunity to respond to some criticism that we've received in submissions from other submitters to the inquiry. There's been an allegation that any evidence supporting the concept that some pornography can have positive effect is only written by academics associated with the pornography industry.
Okay, I've never been associated with the pornography industry or received any money or anything else from the pornography industry.
The same with me, as you may or may not have noticed. I took an oath at the beginning of this, I'm a long-term Anglican with some 12 years as a church council member. I see this as an important part of responding to people where they are in their needs at the time, and it's got nothing to do with any incentives or anything else, and I've never received any, never been offered any.
Thank you.
I've also, I've also never received any funding from the pornography industry, and part of my research I undertake reflexive processes to make sure I'm being open to the participants' views because I'm highly committed to realising what the teens have to say. So everything that I relay is what the teens, teens have to say and not my own view. So yeah, I've never received any funding from the pornography industry.
Thank you. I've got a couple of follow-up questions. One is just a general request on notice about any academic articles that you've published which are relevant to the terms of reference would be very helpful. I think in particular, Associate Professor Lim, there was some content analysis of pornography and what young Australians see, but if there's anything else that we haven't come across, that would be great for all of the witnesses. The other thing I just wanted to ask, probably a final question on, is we, I think it was from both of your submissions, the role of parents or the role or the interactions between young people and adults and the sort of the shame and stigma and guilt around that. We've heard ideas about education for children. What should parents, what should we be doing with parents who perhaps just don't know, don't understand, thinks that, you know, 10, my kid couldn't possibly have had exposure to this, it'd never happen to my kid, they wouldn't look for it, they wouldn't. How do we engage? Have you, one, any research and two, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, we've done quite a bit of research with parents, and, you know, parents have never also received any education about pornography, and most of them didn't even receive any sexual education, that's all. What we consistently find is that parents believe that they should be having discussions with their children about pornography, but they don't want to. but they don't want to until they're sure that their child has seen pornography. And most believe that their child hasn't seen pornography unless they find direct evidence or their child tells them. Yes, and parents certainly do need more education. We've found that the main thing that parents will say in a discussion, if they do find out their child has seen pornography, is just kind of a simple, well, there's two avenues, I guess. One group will say, you know, don't watch porn, it's bad, will stop you from watching it. But many will also say, you know, it's normal for kids to be curious, just know that porn is fake. Don't believe what you see in it, it's all fake. And that's kind of the extent of the information that children get from parents. And really, that's all parents know to say as well. They don't know how to talk about positive sex and relationships that are good and ethical and how to consent the sexual acts. Parents are also lacking this knowledge and they don't know how to talk to their kids about it either.
Well, I mean, without wanting to be controversial, given the statistics, it's very likely that the parents are consumers of pornography as well. So I guess that might muddy the waters a bit there. Either Professor Green or Ms Woodley, have you got any comments on that parent side of things?
I'd agree that our research also indicates that parents feel unable or unprepared to have these conversations with children. What I don't, what I think they don't realise is how protective it can be for the children if the parents do have these conversations, because then the children can then raise issues with the parents and they can be confident that they're not going to be punished for often something that has got nothing to, you know, not in their control, particularly where they've been shown something or sent something on a phone or another personal device. We found that parents did want to be better equipped for these conversations, but the overwhelming message in the media is that children shouldn't see them and there's very little balance in this. So parents feel that they have in some way left their children exposed if their child manages to see porn, which is one of the reasons why phones and such like are often confiscated in response to it. You know, that's seen as parents doing now what they feel should have been done before because they think their child may have been harmed. When we talk to older children, sort of 15, 16, 17, they, they don't see porn as harmful, but they do talk about how it would have been helpful to talk about some of these things, you know, how they didn't realise then what they realise now. And, and so, yes, we do believe that parents need a lot more support. They need to be encouraged to be more confident and keep conversations going. Start them early and keep them going. I mean, I think we've got a very well-known health education booklet in WA. Talks, talks, talk soon, talk often, talk early, talk often, from the WA Health Department, which essentially says that children, it's protective for children to know names, for example, of body parts right from their first words, because then they can tell a parent or a trusted adult if someone is behaving inappropriately with them, apart from anything else.
Thank you. Our time has finished, but I wanted to say thank you very much to you all for the research that you do, the submission that you made and the time you've made to speak with us today. You have taken a few things on notice and it's possible that we might have supplementary questions that we, the secretary will be in touch with you about, but thank you very much again for appearing today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for appearing here today. If I could ask each witness, starting with Dr Valentine Jones, to state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation.
My name is Marshall Valentine Jones, doctor, and my oath is this. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Sorry, your position?
I am CEO of DigiHelp Publishing.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Julie Karaki. I am the Director of the Shia Muslim Council of Australia and I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you.
My name is Deirdre Little. I'm a medical practitioner and the Bioethics Convenor for Catholic Women's League. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much. And would any of you like to begin by making an opening statement? Certainly, we'll start at that end.
I ought to correct my position. I'm actually Secretary for the New South Wales Council of Churches as well, which is the...
We're all multiple things, aren't we?
I confused myself, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. Please carry on.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to address the growing concerns surrounding the early exposure of our youth to pornography and the profound impacts that it has on their development and wellbeing. The issues we raise today are of great concern to the New South Wales Council of Churches and its eight denominations. The relationship between harmful pornography and its impact on young people is highly relevant to our communities, which collectively represent tens of thousands of young people across our schools and churches in New South Wales. What is clear is that parents and carers, teachers and leaders are all grappling with the impact of internet pornography on our young people. We want a society where young people are safe, well-informed and supported as they navigate modern life. Unfortunately, the pervasive exposure to pornography threatens these efforts and undermines the positive development of our young people. Our quantitative studies and onsite consultation reveal a confronting picture of confusion, hyper-sexualised behaviours, harassment and abuse. We are also deeply concerned about the broader societal impacts of pornography. Our member denominations have generations of investment in the betterment of society and we believe harmful pornography is a significant threat to that good. Numerous stories and studies highlight the devastating harm porn causes to individuals and to communities. Firstly, we must acknowledge the alarming trend of early exposure to pornography, which is becoming more common. This exposure influences young people's understanding of sex and relationships and consent, often leading to risky behaviours, body dissatisfaction and a distorted sense of self-worth. Secondly, the media by which pornography is accessed, which is primarily the internet and mobile devices, means young people can have easy access to explicit content without safeguards or parental oversight. This raises questions about the effectiveness of current restrictions on access and whether stronger measures are needed. Thirdly, there is a disturbing relationship between pornography use and the understanding of respect to consent. Mainstream pornography often normalises aggression and misogyny, distorting young people's views of healthy relationships. Violent and misogynistic content perpetuates negative stereotypes and disrespect towards women and vulnerable individuals. Fourthly, AI-generated porn and deep fake technology add another layer of concern, allowing explicit content to be created, often of underage people and without consent, raising significant privacy and ethical issues. Fifthly, we believe to address these challenges, there are multiple strategies that are required. We must invest in effective education programmes. Current sex education often fails to address the broad risks of pornography. There are initiatives like DigiHelp, which I developed in my PhD research with University of Sydney, that are examples of effective options for consideration. We must provide better education and support for parents and carers to help them navigate their children through the online challenges. We must also empower young people themselves to be critical of their world and to find their meaning outside of the sexual norms promoted through pornography and the internet at large. And we must work harder at reducing the amount of exposure to pornography, both in terms of first-time exposure and also ongoing prevalence. Stronger access controls and regulation are essential to ensure the online environment is safe for young people. By addressing these concerns, we can foster healthier attitudes towards sex and relationships and consent.
Thank you. Mrs, will Chris go along the line? Mrs Karaki?
Yes, thank you. Firstly, I'd like to thank you for inviting the Shia Muslim Council of Australia to present to this important inquiry. The Shia Muslim Council of Australia represents 37 organisations across Australia from all states and territories and we advocate for policies that protect our community and the wider Australian community, particularly our children and young people. Pornography is often framed as an individual choice, but its widespread accessibility and influence have far-reaching consequences on mental health, relationships and social societal values. It's not just a religious or cultural issue, but it's a broader social concern affecting public safety and wellbeing. Today, we will highlight why stronger regulations are necessary. As part of our submission, we conducted a focus group involving males and females aged 15 to 21 from culturally diverse backgrounds within the Shia Muslim community. The insights from this focus group were, a summary of it, I guess, are as follows. The Shia Muslim Council found that all forms of pornography were harmful to these particular groups and the distinction between harmful and non-harmful pornography was misleading. Research and focus group findings indicated that exposure even to soft pornography often escalated into increased consumption of more explicit and harmful content. Early exposure and mental health risks. Studies show that a significant percentage of Australian children are exposed to pornography before the age of 16. Early exposure distorts body image, fosters unrealistic expectations and increases the risk of addiction. The slippery slope from sexualised content to pornography. Young people, young people frequently begin with exposure to non-pornographic sexualised content in movies, TV shows and music videos, which desensitises them and often leads to seeking explicit pornography. A review of the rating system for mainstream media is necessary to reduce exposure to sexualised content. And lastly, undermining consent and respect education. Pornography portrays relationships devoid of mutual respect, reinforcing gender stereotypes and normalising aggression, which contradicts educational efforts or consent and healthy relationships. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr Little?
Thank you. As Catholic women, we regard all forms of pornography as harmful and that so-called standard non-violent pornography is not harmless. And this accords with the deep tradition and teaching of the Catholic Church. Children are immersed in increasingly sexually explicit media. This may contribute to normalising of pornography in Australian society. Pornography itself is a major global business, available, accessible, anonymous, affordable and poorly regulated. As we evidenced in our submission, early exposure to pornography predisposes to frequent pornography use in adults. And there's a trial here, which we also will be outlining at this moment. Frequent pornography use in adults then predisposes to normalisation of pornography use. Progressive normalisation of pornography use in adults leads to progressive normalisation of violent sexual practices in Australia. Children are more likely to experience a broken home and parental disharmony in a home where there is repeated adult exposure to even non-violent standard pornography. It is associated with reduced evaluation of marriage regarding extramarital affairs as normal, associated with mounting use to addiction, associated with escalation to more deviant pornography, the trivialisation of rape and behavioural aggression. 62% of marital lawyers report internet pornography plays a role in divorce. With the increasing acceptance and use of pornography, society and culture become more hyper-sexualised, hence the developing phenomenon of sexting. The burgeoning social shift and the addiction it facilitates can increase the demand for the sex trafficking of women and children and other forms of exploitation. Research over recent decades consistently since the advent of the internet has shown that pornography usage is associated with individual dysfunction, sexual deviancy and behavioural aggression and violence. The Catholic Church specifically is concerned as well about the spiritual, other spiritual effects of harms on children from pornography. Sex can be begun to be viewed as a commodity that can be bought. The demeaning nature of pornography is not only portrayed to children as something which could be considered perhaps gradually normalising acceptance, but also is gravely injurious to those who are portrayed in the filming and depiction of these events. The Catholic Church and Catholic Women's League recommend that civil authorities should prevent the production and distribution of pornographic material. Our recommendations are that the state would assist with the education of parents in monitoring the home environment regarding screens and books, so that computers are in a family space, that no cellphones are in the bedroom, that there are family charge stations, that parents are familiarised with the use of filters. Some parents are not as IT savvy as their kids. Parents need to be familiarised and helped with the use of filters and blocks, especially for older children. To be facilitated to discuss with their children in advance, to tell a parent if something they have viewed has upset them. And we believe that tech platforms should be answerable in their role in exposing and cleaning up the internet from the harms that pornography is causing, including internet grooming of children and all the resultant effects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I wanted to ask a general question to begin with of all of you and thank you for your submissions and your statements. I think, I think consistent across the three submissions and statements is an idea of restriction or regulation of pornography online. And we've had other submissions and I guess kind of life experience, which says that that's an incredibly difficult thing to do, including because we can't keep up with the ways to get around regulations. So I wondered, given that that seems to be something you're all advocating for, perhaps in different parts, if you could explain a bit more how, how you would imagine that practically working? We might start from the opposite end this time, so Dr Little, if you had a response?
Well, I know that there has been discussion about limiting access, but we would maintain that the technological platforms bear a lot of responsibility and accountability and answerability for this. So we would be looking to have the tech platforms accountable to what they display on their platforms.
So are you talking just in social media or are we talking sort of Google searches?
Oh, I was speaking particularly, sorry, of the internet, pertaining to our submission. I was referring to the internet.
Okay, so, so search engines are responsible for, for that?
I think there should be some accountability, yes, within the search engines of platforms and those tech companies that are deriving profit from that, yes.
Right, okay, thank you. Mrs Karaki?
Yeah, I agree as well. Some of the recommendations we had listed was to hold some of the content distributors legally accountable. So right now, it's very easily accessible and it's quite anonymous. From the focus groups that we ran, many children... From the focus groups that we ran, many children just mentioned it was too easy to get around because the age was a simple yes or no, so they could just click on yes that they were over eighteen. So maybe looking at banning AI-generated deep fake pornography, something that maybe our government could hold to account, these people that are doing it, AI. And also increase platform responsibility, so maybe putting the onus back on the producers of it or making it so easily accessible, whether that be through forms of social media or other aspects. So I think instead of looking at what can we do to stop the child from accessing it, or what can we do before it even gets to the hands of the children?
Okay, so just with that, so the end of last year, there has been an amendment to the Criminal Code about deep fakes and making that, you know, explicitly illegal and distribution of them. I guess I'm just trying to be very practical about what we take out of this. Is that the sort of inter-jurisdictional issues? The not all porn is distributed by, you know, big companies who with, you know, production units that you can find. I'm just trying to sort of get to sort of practical, the practicalities of it. I understand the principles of what you're saying, I'm just trying to imagine what that looks like for regulators or policymakers, but thank you for that. Dr. Ballantyne Jones, do you have a response?
So the question being, suggestions about how to reduce access?
Well, it seems to me, and I think, I think in your, one of the submissions you're associated with, maybe the, maybe the one for DigiHelp, that you're supportive of digital restrictions on access, so I wonder if you could speak to that?
So that's certainly one of the strategies that you would need if you're going to get some effective restrictions. I don't think a one-size-fits-all solution is going to work. So in terms of access to the actual content themselves, how are they getting it? They're getting it from generally the internet, so what does that mean? Are they going to websites? Are their devices allowing easy access there? And so it raises questions of whether or not there are some device-specific blockers that can be put on? Who's going to control them? Is it parents? Is it schools? Who owns the devices? So there's certainly some areas which we want to look at in terms of immediate limitation to the potential of seeing pornography through a device that's possessed by the child. But there's some other questions which we could ask around this, and that is, to what extent have we informed or educated the parents about the risks to start with? And what advice can and training can we provide for parents and carers to be more proactive at home about their kids' use of technology? When, where, how often, the frequency, the need? In terms of schools, so whether the access is through a school-provided device or it's a bring-from-home device, what are the policies around devices in general? The school will make a big difference because if it's bring-your-own-device and kids can have phones, well, it doesn't matter if there's a good proxy server at the school network, kids can just hotspot and jump that and get on to whatever they want anyway. And so we're now looking at school policies about general technologies, what's available and when it can, how it can be used. We can look at other ideas, including at the ISP level, and to what degree are they going to be held accountable for or required to limit the access to certain materials? So that can be anywhere in the arena of age verification type of limitations, or it could be that they censor access to sites in an opt-in, opt-out way, as it's just been canvassed in other jurisdictions around the world. So, look, it's broad, and my general response to the question is, how do we actually practically reduce the frequency? I think we need a multi-pronged approach, and we've got to be real, knowing a lot of the providers of pornography are active in trying to reach people, so it's, people have it against them if they're young and naive and don't understand the world that they're in. But big kids will be motivated to see it themselves quite often. And so we're both trying to limit the accidental exposure, but also reduce the intentional accessing as well, and that takes different things.
Yep, I can see one of my colleagues.
If I may, Chair, I have a question that's a direct follow-up from your question. I'd be interested to know if there's any other Australian jurisdiction or overseas jurisdiction that successfully restricted or reduced access to pornography in a way that's been effective that you could point us to?
Well, I know that the UK have passed legislation, actually some time ago, at the end of David Cameron's period, to require the ISPs to enable an opt-in to see porn environment. Now, I don't believe they actually enacted that, so we can't evaluate whether that happened. Then age verification is the next round, which has been passed as a requirement to access adult sites, not just there, but also in various jurisdictions. I can't state the exact places off the top of my head in the US in states. And I think it's early days to evaluate whether or not these are effective. I would suggest that they're not foolproof anyway. I think that kids will find ways around them, particularly if they've got VPNs. So we can't think that's a one-glove-it-all solution, it's not. It's just, as a researcher in the harms of porn on young people, my concern would be doing our best to reduce that first-time age of exposure, I mean, increase that first-time age of exposure, because that makes a massive difference to the correlation of negative attitudes and behaviours that flow on with them, in them in a few years' time after that first exposure. So part of it is we're trying to hold back the dam and also make it harder for them, if they don't want to see it, to see it.
Can I, before I hand over to my colleagues, I've just got a question. So you've spoken a bit about sort of the responsibility and education of parents. And we've heard today from the Department of Education about the new syllabus, which is to come in twenty-six, twenty-seven. And I wondered what you see the role of that syllabus and that in-school education of children about pornography?
I think the edu-, so not speaking exactly to the specifics of the new NESA syllabus, but in general, education is massively important. It's one of the essential parts of how we can produce protective factors for the children because their advanced awareness, not only of the risks of negative online content, but also positive and healthy relationships and sexuality is vital. We know where kids have had, this has been shown through many international studies on sexual education, where kids have had a good, sound sexual education. It's increased their wellbeing factors, it's reduced their objectification desires of one another, and it's also increased their self-esteem. And so, and it hasn't incited negative acting out. So good education is certainly one big part of the chessboard, but parents are also a big part of the chessboard.
Could I ask just for a very brief response from Mrs. Karaki and then Miss Little, and then I'll pass on?
Yeah, just considering that most of the youth that were exposed to it, their first time it was accidental, and the presenters before us mentioned that sometimes they didn't know what they were looking at. And I guess that fear of not knowing what you're viewing may lead you to not want to discuss it with an adult, and even if they do, sometimes parents don't know how to react to that. So education on both parts, it's a little bit tricky because as the studies have shown, some children are exposed to it at eight, some at fifteen. So if you bring that conversation into a classroom in year three, that could be very scary and daunting and may even lead to them going and trying to explore. So in saying that, however, if a child is aware of the dangers of pornography, or at least aware of what it is through sound education through the schooling system, at least they're a little bit more aware of it. Looking at some of the focus groups, things like sexting, if a child's aware of what it is before it happens to them, they're a lot more likely to speak to someone that's maybe more aware or in a position to support, whereas if they're not, they would just keep that to themselves. So definitely, whether it be parental understanding and education, not so much that their child is seeking it, but they may be exposed to it, and if they are, how can we try our best to restrict it? And many of the children that were spoken to in the focus group spoke about it coming through games. So it's just a very innocent game and a pop-up ad pops up. Sometimes they'll shut that down, but if they're alone in their room, you know, curiosity might lead them to look into it a little bit further. So definitely in terms of education supporting.
Dr. Little, do you have any response?
Thank you, just a couple of follow-on points and issues there. The first thing is that because this seems to be an assumption that standard non-violent pornography is harmless, we have to keep this in mind when we're talking about and acknowledging the fact that for most children, either accidental or deliberate exposure is within the home. So for the, especially I suppose for the accidental exposure, there is a lot of acceptance in the community that pornography can be harmless. And so it's actually something that might be an older sibling or a parent might even be viewing, that the child will inadvertently then access. So we're, I'm wondering, and we're proposing in fact, that most adults are not aware of the harms that can attend even so-called standard non-violent pornography. So in terms of the effects on, and it has been published and researched, and we did reference this in our submission. In terms of the effect of this standard non-violent pornography on family life, we are aware of the effects on marital breakdown, of the effects on disharmony in the home, on the effects that one partner, usually the woman, will feel demeaned by the husband's preoccupation or the partner's preoccupation with internet pornography. And this causes a level of disruption and disharmony in the home. But further to that, are the parents aware, when they are consenting, I suppose, themselves to watch this pornography? Are they aware of the harms they could be inviting upon themselves, upon their relationship, upon their home and upon their children? So it becomes an issue very much of consent, and what are the elements of rather informed consent there? We already saw, for example, with cigarette smoking, how it went on for over a generation, two generations, before there was a warning, well, hang on, this could actually be injurious to your health. And at the moment, because there is this acceptance that standard non-violent pornography is harmless, so there's harmful pornography and there's good pornography, tends to normalise it, and we know that normalising pornography leads to an escalation in use, and that can, that also does lead to an escalation towards other deviancy and violent forms.
Sorry, Miss Little, Dr. Little, I might stop you there, not in any way trying to shut it. Oh, I was saying, I might just get you to stop there for that answer, not for any reason other than I'm aware that I've taken a lot of time for that, and perhaps you could pick up the threads of that through the answers given to my colleagues, my apologies.
Thank you. Dr. Ballantyne Jones, if I could just quickly ask you, and I realise this is a piece-of-string argument, given all the work you've done on your PhD, and following on from Dr. Little in terms of harms of pornography, we've heard evidence that often children will access pornography intentionally for pleasurable reasons. I understand that you've looked at the recent neuroscience research. I wonder if you could just outline briefly the effects on the brain of pleasurable access of pornography, whether that continues to be pleasurable, and then the impact on impulse control and therefore the social impact of use of pornography?
Yeah, sure. Well, there's an emerging large body of neurological research now that's been examining the impact of particularly pornography on development of the brain. So when we talk about kids intentionally accessing porn to, for pleasure, ninety-nine per cent of males who would do that would do it for the purpose of masturbation, and to a lesser extent, females. But when it's used for arousal purposes, we know that the brain unleashes a vast volume of neurochemicals associated with that process and pleasure, one of which is dopamine. And dopamine has a very powerful effect on changing the neuroplasticity of the brain. We know because of a recent discovery of a protein called delta fosB that when you repeat a pleasurable experience regularly, your brain will lay down new neural pathways to reinforce your interest in that activity that's generating the pleasure. And so over time, if you keep repeating it, you become more preoccupied with that behaviour and you become more sensitised to that behaviour. So your cues to that trigger interest in that become faster and require less to be triggered. And so that's the first arena of neuroscience that we know. You become hypersensitised to the stimulus from the sexual arousal. Secondly, you also over time become desensitised. And what happens is that when your brain is saturated in high volumes of what we call supernormal stimuli, which is the type of dopamine that's produced in sexual arousal to pornography, high volumes of immediate access without any effort to get there, the brain sort of switches off from the volume of dopamine and the receptors shut down, which means while they're getting more sensitised, they're getting desensitised, and they need to generate the same pleasure they had before, they have to change or alter the content that they're looking at. And so this actually drives interest into novelty, and novelty is the concept of heightening titillation and the sensation of arousal. And so this invariably drives them into content which is morphing into more confronting. We also know that the brain in other areas changes. The prefrontal cortex, which is the mechanism of executive control, and delayed gratification, it is inhibited in the short term, it's inhibited when you have spikes of dopamine. So the capacity to actually think clearly and regulate self-control when you are under arousal is reduced, which means if kids have regular access to triggers, then it diminishes their capacity to concentrate and focus on other things. But over time, the brain changes, and what happens is that it diminishes in grey and white brain matter, and the neural connectors to the limbic system, which is the emotional system, impulse system, get reduced as well, so that basically they suffer what they call a condition of hypofrontality or diminished prefrontal cortex functionality. And it just means that they can't regulate as much self-control, not only over the issue that they're getting stimulation from, but that actually widens out to other arenas in their life as well. And we know in the broader behavioural addiction sciences, which essentially focus on gaming, gambling, pornography and social media, and that people who immerse themselves in regular compulsive behaviours in that degree lose self-control across the board, and so that diminishes academic outcomes, capacities to concentrate, capacities to enjoy other things. And so we see that under MRI scans, the types of changes to the brains. And many neuroscientists have come to the conclusion that porn addicts, like social media and gaming addicts, have brains that over time start to resemble substance abuse disorders as well, like alcoholics and heroin addicts and so forth. So the brain changes are now demonstrably serious, and they've got concerns of many researchers around the world.
And what impact would that have on the ability of people with that addiction to recognise the importance of consent in personal relationships?
The more compulsive you are, your capacity to think rationally about wider relational issues is diminished, partly because we just know that the more that you are embracing a certain topic content, the more you're thinking, your attitudes and your behaviours align with that. So we know that people who, the more they look at porn, the more sexual risk-taking they become, the more sexually insecure they become, and this flows on to problems with their relationships. They also start to adapt the interests and the themes and the ideas and the content that they consume. They start to see it as normal and expected, and they start to think that other people will think the same way as them. And that means that their lines for respect of other people's boundaries gets blurred. But also, as I said before, when you're under dopamine journey high, your capacity to think then and there about how to act is immediately limited. So we know that with alcohol, when you're under alcohol consumption states, you don't think and act clearly, which is why when it comes to consent, someone can't get consent while they're under the influence. Or as it is when you're under a dopamine journey high, you also can't think as straight. And so in those circumstances, people don't act as rationally, and it limits their ability to act consensually and respectfully in their relations.
But not all thirteen-year-olds who access pornography will become addicts, will they?
Well, I mean, addiction is a clinical term, and we've got to be very careful when we're talking about porn addiction because in America, under the DSM-FIVE, they don't even use that term. It's under the World Health Organisation, ICD-11, where we see the definition of addiction relating to sexual compulsive behaviours, of which pornography is a subset. And so when we talk addiction, we're talking clinical, and it's a split view there. But I like to use the term compulsive, which you can measure on a scale. We know that thirteen-year-olds who have a high volume of consumption and started... and started earlier will be higher on that compulsive scale than others who haven't. And so if you want to talk about addiction in that broader sense of compulsivity and capacity and limited ability to reduce the behaviour when you want to, that certainly is present in young adolescents who have been consuming this frequently.
And very briefly, what would be the best intervention, in your view, to limit or manage or moderate that compulsion?
If someone has that compulsive behaviour in pornography, they need to have immediate withdrawal from access to it to allow their brain and their mind to start to have a break from the triggers. They also need to go through some processes of replacing their avenue of pleasure into other things. Because what happens when you get compulsive is that you get triggered by all sorts of moods and emotions and you want to default to the thing that gives you relief, which is the, computer gaming's the same, social media's the same. And so with all behavioural change, when it comes to neurological replacement behavioural change, you certainly need to divert it with new activities and interests which will allow you to create new dopamine-generated pathways that are healthier and more balanced. And you need support and you need education and awareness and you need also have a conviction. If they don't have a conviction that this is unhealthy and they need something different, it's very difficult to get them to change.
I'm just going to check in with Dr Con.
All right.
So it's a practical thing. Is this an area that schools intervene with education? Is this parents? Is this a therapeutic? Is this law? Is this shutting down access through regulation? What are the practical measures that we can engage with?
For people who have problematic behaviours?
Well, I think ideally to stop those problematic behaviours occurring in the first place.
Well, you stop the problematic behaviours occurring by reducing the, or limiting the option of being able to engage with pornography. That's as simple as that, but.
Would delayed age of access to pornography have an impact?
Yes, it does. You are less compulsive as an eighteen-year-old if you had later access to pornography than early access.
Okay, so if we could delay age of first access to pornography, that would have an impact?
And also frequency of engagement in those earlier years makes a big difference. And we needed more research here to understand just what the impact of these dopamine journey experiences are on early adolescents. But all the evidence is pointing both at social media and gaming and other areas as well as pornography. That is such a critical age.
One more question.
Yeah. Mrs Karaki and Dr Little, you both mentioned young people being exposed to pornography, often accidentally through pop-ups in games and other activities they may be using on the internet. Do you have any recommendations as to how we can stop those pop-ups occurring?
One of the issues is a lot of these games are free. And if you wanted to remove ads, you can purchase the game. But some of these games can't be purchased. So for many families, depending on their demographics or their ability to purchase games for their children, it's a fun game, it comes up as an ad, they download it, but they don't have an option to purchase the game. It's just free and these ads pop up. So if we could have some regulations in Australia where any game that could be downloaded at least has that option, so if parents wanted to remove the risk of a pop-up ad coming up. Another thing is also making games, if they are targeted at a certain age group, restricting the ads that are allowed to be on these particular games. At the moment, I'm not sure if there are regulations around that. But just by the amount of people that are exposed to it in that way, it appears not, or maybe they're not strongly enforced. That would probably be one of the recommendations.
Thank you.
And I would add to that that perhaps there could be some technological monitoring of algorithms that permit those pop-ups just to appear randomly when they're unsorted is of concern. And the other, as a recommendation included, and as I suppose Catholic mothers and grandmothers, you know, we're strong believers in not necessarily having computers tucked away in bedrooms. And so we think like in the design of the family layout of the lounge room, whatever it may be, that there could be provision made for the computer to be in a family space as opposed to in the bedroom. So that even if the technological platforms are not monitoring the pop-ups and even if the algorithms are not in place yet, because we've only had internet for less than forty-year customary description of a generation, that that could be monitored by the family and the family environment. And the children would be aware of that. And so also parents who see things popping up can then report them and have, and to know the avenues to report such things, which comes back to parental education that we would advocate strongly, that the state provide parents.
Thank you.
Could I just add something very quickly, if that's okay? It was a brilliant idea of report this ad. You know, I don't know if that's available at the moment in terms of gaming. Sometimes online you can report an ad and say why you don't wish to see it. But in the gaming industry, I don't think that's available. So even if that were available and our children were educated about, you might see something that you don't really feel comfortable with, if you do, you can report it. And if there was a system to regulate that or to screen, maybe that could be something that could help.
Just one quick follow-up question. Dr Little, you talk about the home environment. You talk about the home environment. It's a tricky one when you're a policymaker. We don't have, we don't reach our hands very far into a home environment. What, and you talk about educating parents. Where do you imagine that that might take place?
There are actually many sort of avenues for that, just from experience. So in some ways, and this might sound unusual, but it actually kind of starts with, you know, parenting classes that a lot of parents, especially first-time parents, will attend. There are even parenting classes conducted in the antenatal context. And there are very many parenting opportunities that come through PNF groups, Parents and Friends, and from schools, they'll be notified of parenting courses. Burnside run them, lots of organisations run them. So that could be a staple feature on the agenda for all parenting courses to prepare and equip parents to deal with the possible problem that might develop and its ramifications. I think that's something we haven't looked at yet in terms of what the government can do.
Thank you. That being it, Ms Carter, do you have any more questions?
I'm sure I do. In terms of education taking place in schools, perhaps this is a question for Mrs Karaki and Dr Little. What would, what would you see as being advantageous or ways to build relationships between schools and parents so that everybody's working together on the same issue? Do you think those communications work well between schools and parents or are there particular strategies that you could recommend?
Personally, if I may answer that, I would strongly advocate, Catholic Women's League would advocate for the involvement of and the presence of parents at any such discussions with children. So that the children see that something that parents are involved in. The language is the same, it's a common language. And the children perceive that it's everyone agrees with this and that they are not unusual if they report it or want to talk about it. But certainly I would involve parents in those discussions so that parents know what's being taught and what's happening, what the language is.
Thank you.
I think just realistically, it's a very difficult thing to touch on because which parents are we talking about? Which community? Who is exposed to it? What are the parents' opinions of it? So I definitely think running school seminars about just the awareness. I think a lot of parents may just see it as, oh, it's just what teenagers do. But maybe they don't know the ramifications, as you know, Dr Jones was mentioning a bit earlier. So having that parental education and awareness run through schools, whether it be through, I would say probably particularly parent-led education, whether it be through the PNF, PNC or directly from the school. So if this was something that we rolled out and said, you know, if all schools can at least notify parents of the risks, then the parents are well informed. And through PDH, you know, through subjects at school where children can be exposed to the harms of it. One of the, if I can just quickly go back to the focus group, is that most students, one particular teacher mentioned that over three years, fifty students had admitted to addiction. But that's because they had a good relationship with this teacher. That doesn't happen across the board. So it's a very touchy subject, I do understand that. But I think starting somewhere and to begin with education would be beneficial.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for your submissions and for taking the time to appear today. If you've taken anything on notice or there's supplementary questions, the secretary will be in touch with you in the coming days. Thank you very much again. Thank you very much. We will start our next session. Before we begin, if I could ask each of the witnesses, starting perhaps with Ms McMahon, to state your name, your position and swearing either an oath or an affirmation.
Hi, my name's Miss Paris McMahon and I am a youth advisor at Napcan. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much.
My name is Alice Dolan. I'm a youth council member and a researcher at Napcan. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Ms Dolan. Dr Partridge?
I'm Dr Emma Partridge and I'm a special advisor on prevention at Our Watch. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Ms Field?
Hi, my name's Renata Field. I'm the Policy and Strategy Manager also at Our Watch. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And to begin, would anyone there like to give an opening statement? Yes, Ms Dolan?
Good afternoon. My name is Alice Dolan and this is my colleague Paris McMahon. We're both members of Napcan's Youth Advisory Council. And so we speak to you today on the topic of pornography as young people who've grown up alongside a rapidly changing and often unregulated internet landscape as a core part of our lives. Napcan is a leading organisation in the prevention of child maltreatment and the delivery of respectful relationships education. And Napcan believes that young people should be at the table with decision-makers and given a meaningful say in the decisions that affect us. So we're grateful to the committee for this opportunity and to Napcan for the support. The perspectives and insights we share today are a collection of the diverse opinions of young people from our youth council, the experience of Napcan's trainers delivering respectful relationships education and the current research out there on pornography. The main arguments we present during our submission are that young people are accessing pornography early, frequently and easily, that young people want good pornography education because they believe that it's harmful and that they feel shame and fear of repercussions.
While stronger policies are needed to limit access to harmful pornography, our key message today is that education is essential. Young people deserve comprehensive, evidence-based education on relationships, intimacy and consent with a direct focus on pornography. We believe the best outcomes will be achieved by giving young people critical analysis skills and an informed choice over what role pornography will play in their lives. Napcan does not have a dedicated policy team. Alice and I wrote this submission ourselves in consultation with other young people because we are passionate about this issue. I am a full-time student with a completely different job that I work four days a week and this submission was pieced together over many lunch breaks and after work. We're here because we're proud of this submission and we feel really strongly about this issue and we're looking forward to the discussion today, so thank you for having us.
Thank you very much. Dr Partridge?
Thank you, sure. I begin by acknowledging the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation and paying my respects to elders, past and present. Our Watch is the national leader in the primary prevention of violence against women. And our submission focuses on the impacts of pornography on young people and the opportunities to support young people to develop respectful relationships as part of our national violence prevention effort. Our work includes a national role in the primary prevention in the education system through respectful relationships education. This helps students learn how to build healthy, equal and respectful relationships. Our work also includes the LINE, which is an always-on campaign, online and on social media, that engages young people aged fourteen to twenty on topics like sex, dating, consent and healthy relationships. The LINE supports young people to build the skills they need to think critically about pornography, its portrayal of gender roles and relationships and its impacts on their lives. Our Watch has made contributions to the body of evidence on pornography, including developing background papers, collecting online survey data and evaluating primary prevention in schools and in online settings. Not all pornography is problematic and not all pornography use is harmful. However, we do know that the representations in some pornography can have harmful effects. Some pornography includes depictions of violence against women and stereotypical representations of women as submissive and men as dominant or aggressive. We also know from the Man Box research that young men with the highest levels of endorsement of those Man Box rules about rigid ideas of masculinity are more likely to use violent pornography and have more violent supportive attitudes, as well as more likely to have perpetrated violence themselves. Pornography plays a role in shaping expectations and understandings about gender roles, about sex, power, consent, particularly for young people who are still forming their ideas and attitudes about these issues and who are often accessing pornography years before they begin their own sexual relationships. Our Watch is realistic in our assessment that young people and people generally will continue to view pornography and it will be one of the sources young people go to for information about sex, sexuality and relationships. So our focus is on equipping young people with the tools they need to help them critically engage with the messages they encounter in pornography. This committee has an opportunity to make recommendations that empower young people to navigate the digital world with critical thinking, respect, empathy and resilience. This can support the development of healthy relationships and is an important part of the overall goal of preventing violence against women. Our key recommendation is that pornography and its impacts should be part of a much more comprehensive approach to respectful relationships education and comprehensive sexuality education in a structured and age-appropriate way that meets the needs of young people. A specific recommendation to further resource teachers to do this work more effectively would support the New South Wales Government's Pathways to Prevention Strategy which commits to RRE in schools. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. One of the things we've heard a lot about and is present in a lot of the submissions is about education. And you've both have mentioned that in your opening statements as well. I'm interested though in Napcan's submission, which talks about the ways that young people prefer to receive their information and how they learn. And also about current approaches which can emphasise illegality of sharing information, you know, the trouble that you might get into if you're found out. So I wondered if you could speak a bit more about what the experience of and preferences of young people are with regards to how they're educated in this space?
Yes, we can say that from what we've heard from young people on Youth Council, from young people undertaking Napcan's education is that they really want to have these open, honest and detailed conversations about pornography. And as we know from the E-Safety survey that many submissions quoted, that young people, they already feel high levels of shame and embarrassment about their consumption of pornography. They already feel afraid that they're going to be getting into trouble. They already feel afraid that they're going to be getting into trouble if they do discuss it. They think that they might be breaking the law and they just don't have any clear information. And this just creates a culture of shame and fear that prevents young people from accessing help. And so as a result, they don't feel comfortable talking with parents, don't feel comfortable talking with teachers, and also that they don't believe their teachers feel comfortable either. And so we see that when we are delivering this education, we find that young people actually quite respond really well once they realise that we are having these open, frank, and honest conversations. And so some of the key principles behind Napcan's delivery of pornography education is that the conversation will be facilitated by the adult, but the actual content that comes up will be led by the young people. So the facilitator, for example, asks what sort of things have we heard about pornography? And then base the conversation off what young people already know. Because we can assume the young people are chatting to each other in the playground about this anyway. And so we take an approach that for the young people, there's no right or wrong answer, that they will lead the discussion and we unpack the ideas with adult guidance. So we sort of unpack them to discuss themes of harm and consent. And we find that once young people see this, they actually really open up to having this conversation.
Thank you. And if I could ask Our Watch, I was interested, because we're trying to gather as much evidence as out there, and you did mention and I noted that you have undertaken evaluation of primary prevention strategies in schools and online. And I wondered if you could tell us more about the evaluations and what you found that works better or worse? That would be very helpful.
Absolutely. And we can certainly provide on notice some further details about the pilots that we've conducted. So there was a pilot conducted in 2017 and some of the findings around that demonstrated that people's understandings around attitudes were significantly improved due to the work that was done. The research certainly supports a whole-of-school approach. So that's not just working in a classroom, it's not just one-off programmes, but ensuring that it's supported by a whole-of-school approach that includes teachers, it includes school staff, admin staff, it includes parents and family members as well. So that the messages that are shared with young people and students are supported by families once they get into the home environment. And that approach was supported by our research, but it's also very well supported by other international research.
And if I could just add, one of the other things the evaluation found is that teachers were reporting improvements in their relationships with students through delivering this material. And that goes to some of the issues you're talking about, that relationships are key between young people and adults. Young people need those trusted adults who they feel are not embarrassed or uncomfortable about talking about these topics, that they can really open up, that the kids can share what they've seen. And so our evaluation did point to that as a benefit of this approach too, that it improves the rapport between students and adults in talking about these topics.
Thank you. And I wanted just a follow-up on that is your recommendations do talk about the respectful relationships education. And we heard this morning about, and we're going to get further information, about the incoming curriculum. I just wondered, are your recommendations based on what's there now or based on that incoming curriculum? Because if it's the one that's incoming and with this potential to improve it, that's one thing. If it's what's there already, that's another. So I just wondered, at what point in time are we talking about with your recommendations for that curriculum?
I'll start and you can jump in. Whilst, I would say it would work for both. There's still substantial opportunities to improve the new curriculum that's coming in. My understanding that compared to the national curriculum, gender and sexuality are mentioned much less frequently. There's much less emphasis on power and control, the gendered nature of violence, those kind of topics. So there's certainly some opportunities to improve it. We did quite a bit of work supporting New South Wales in the development of the primary prevention strategy. And there is an action within that to review the curriculum. But we also certainly want to emphasise that the work that needs to be done is beyond the curriculum. So whilst the curriculum is important, it's not the only piece of work. And this whole-of-school approach looks beyond the PDHP curriculum and at other opportunities to support children and families to understand respectful relationships education throughout their whole schooling journey.
Thank you for that. And I just want to ask, and it's a question that will cross over with Napcan as well. You talk about, I'm pretty sure you mentioned that not all porn is necessary, pornography is necessarily bad, but you have a particular focus on, I guess, misogynistic porn or porn that's harmful to women. I wondered if you could, that's a key of my concerns. And I wondered if you could talk a bit more about that and why that's, the research that supports that, I guess, would be helpful, and why that's of a particular concern?
Yeah, we do have a focus on that. And in some ways, it's like any form of media that portrays misogynistic representations of relationships between men and women, non-consensual relationships that normalises violence. Now, that can be in a mainstream movie and it can also be in pornography. That's our focus because we know that it has an impact on young people's developing ideas about sex and gender and relationships, but particularly around gendered power relationships. And particularly for young men, around their development of ideas about what it means to be a man, what masculinity is, and how you relate to women can be not the most healthiest ways when they're getting those ideas from pornography because so much of it is containing those representations. Not all of it, and that's why we say it's not all harmful. There's particular LGBTQ young people find particular benefit, some of them, in accessing porn that they can see themselves in. So we wouldn't say all porn, but you're absolutely correct that that's our reason for focusing on pornography because of those misogynistic representations that are fairly common in it. And young people will continue to see those as they see them in the broader world around them. And so Our Watch is focused on giving young people the tools to critically engage with those messages, whether they're seeing them in pornography or in a movie or in the attitudes of their friends. So that's why we work across the whole society to address those misogynistic ideas and representations.
If you have any sort of academic papers or research in particular with regard to that area, if you could provide them on notice, that would be appreciated. And I wanted to ask Napcan, on the issue of, you talk about in your submission about the importance of young people being able to access pornography, to be able to learn things, explore their sexuality, understand various topics. Why is this, you know, why is pornography an appropriate way to do it? Are there other ways? Or can you talk a bit about that? Because we've heard a lot about why young people shouldn't, you know, look at pornography.
I'll start. So overall, we don't actually think that pornography is the best way for this to, for young people to learn about this. We think that sexual health and relationship education is where to go. However, it's just acknowledging that because young people are seeing it and effectively they're inevitably going to see it, it's worth acknowledging that some of the reasons behind it and then some of the outcomes can be beneficial. I think as Our Watch just mentioned, particularly LGBTQ people can get particular benefits out of it and other certain marginalised groups. And it can be helpful for young people in exploring their sexuality and forming their identity because it does still provide information. We just want to make sure that they're being provided with the same critical analysis skills to be able to sift apart what's harmful and what's not.
Ms McMahon?
And as we've discussed in our submission, we didn't discuss harmful pornography specifically, but we mentioned that in isolation, viewing pornography can be harmful without that adequate education. And so having that education and the ability to analyse what consent means and what a respectful relationship should look like can also help a young person have those skills to understand what they're seeing and whether it's realistic or not.
Okay, thank you. I might pass over to the committee and might start with Dr Conne this time.
I asked the same question of some of our earlier witnesses, but I'm interested in experiences from either other Australian jurisdictions or overseas in terms of the types of programmes that you're recommending. Has it been done anywhere else and been shown to be effective?
I mean, respectful relationships education is most wholly implemented in Victoria. And so our evaluations and our evidence comes from the experience of schools rolling that programme out in Victoria, which we can, you know, share or provide. That's probably the main evidence that we have on respectful relationships education.
I also wanted to ask, so your written submission talks about the LINE campaign as an online resource that you provide and it mentions evidence-based content discussing pornography, consent, and healthy relationships. Can you provide the committee with some of that content? What does that educational content actually look like?
Yeah, I mean, the LINE is freely accessible and it includes, you know, fact sheets, resources, video clips, TikTok videos. Much of it is youth-produced, so it's young people talking about what respect means to them or consent or tricky issues in relationships and how they navigate them. So the strength of the LINE is that it's very much produced, co-designed with young people and produced with young people so that it meets their needs, it talks in a language that makes sense to them. Adults viewing it probably may not understand how powerful it is because it's produced by young people. And I think that's probably the key strength of the content that's on the LINE.
And I'd also add to that, whilst there's some content that's specifically about pornography, a lot of the content is about the broader analytical skills that people need to be able to support them if they were to view it. So to improve their understandings about gendered stereotypes, to improve their understandings of different ways of being in the world, depending on your gender, your background, all those type of things. So I think that whilst there may not be everything around pornography that does give you the background skills to be able to be better equipped if you were to come across it. But we can absolutely send some specific examples.
Thank you. Last question, if I may. All four of you have spoken to the value of equipping young people with the analytical tools to assess the information and pornography that they find online. How young do you think it's appropriate to start having that conversation with children?
If I can jump in, I think there's a number of different ways to be having the conversation and to do it at development, sorry, developmentally appropriate stages. And so Napcan's respectful relationships education and these conversations follow a principle that agrees with the same principles laid out by Marie Kram and her It's Time We Talked pornography education material, because that's one of the few pornography-specific programmes available in Australia. But the idea is that you start by introducing just ideas around consent, not in a sexual way, but just consent around letting, you know, other people borrow your pencils, things like that. Start with educating people around being able to name their body parts and things like that. Then you start to build up to pornography, sorry, and that can be done in the primary school years. And then in the early high school years, you start to build up to discussing pornography in the wider context of just possible online harms. And then it's in the later years that you start to discuss then actually pornography as the main topic and delve into the consent and respectful relationships. And so that's the way we address it, but there is that, because there is that balance between not wanting to inadvertently expose young people to extra information that they might not have yet discovered on their own for several years, whilst still also providing the necessary information to the young people who are already viewing the pornography. So it depends on exactly what information you're giving the young people.
Yeah, and I mean, our answer is much the same and that's the evidence that we've provided on respectful relationships. And when we're working with the New South Wales Department of Education in building that into the curriculum, it's about starting in kindergarten with those very simple ideas about respect and consent and then building up through to year 12 where obviously it becomes a lot more specifically focused on sexual relationships, sexual consent, and that would include pornography. But the key point is that pornography is one topic in a whole broad range of other things that need to be talked about in context. Otherwise, it's not meaningful and useful to talk to young people just about that one topic. You need to have built a foundation for that understanding and a foundation for that relationship with the education system that is trusting and that has those key concepts in place before you introduce that topic when it's appropriate. So, yeah.
My question really follows directly on from that. So we've heard evidence today that median age of exposure is about 13, but certainly there are enough children aged eight and nine who've had a serious exposure to pornography and are manifesting problematic behaviours because of that, that there's intervention required. So if we've got those programmes starting in kindergarten, what, I guess, and and I understand your discussion about development of critical analytical skills. What's your experience of the age at which those critical analytical skills might be able to be developed by children? I guess to anybody or to everybody, please?
I mean, I think children are always developing critical analytical skills when they see pictures, when they read stories. Parents and teachers are always working with them to help them understand what it is that they're seeing, what the meaning of it is. Do they interpret it differently to the person next to them? I think that's a standard educational tool that you use with young children to help them interpret and understand the world around them and develop their own response to that. So it's not something that suddenly you introduce when you're talking about pornography. I think it's from the beginning.
I suppose in this specific context, for children to have sufficiently developed critically analytical skills to be able to understand what they were seeing in pornography and question the respect, question the lack of consent, question the violence, question the male pleasure dominance that is typical of pornography, bearing in mind the programmes that you're both involved with. I guess, is this going to be effective for eight-year-olds? Are we looking more at 13-year-olds being able to critically evaluate what they're seeing? Do you have any comment on that?
I would just reinforce the previous comments of starting early and reinforcing those messages throughout the years and then making sure that they're also reinforced by parents. So that we're teaching educators, we're also teaching parents to share those key messages and skills. In the teaching that happens in Victoria, they really support a peer approach where, you know, it's not just the content that you're teaching, it's the way that you're teaching it. So it's about critical analysis skills and to be able to develop those. And I think you can do that even in preschool. You can do it from a very early age to develop those type of skills. And I'd also reinforce in this point around the evaluation that we did, that in teaching this type of content and ways of respecting each other and improving relationships, you're in essence improving the relationship between teachers and children, between parents and children, so that there's more respect and there's more ability to have stronger conversations. And most young people in the surveys that we did said that they didn't feel comfortable broaching these topics with their parents because they felt embarrassed. So if you have a good relationship, then you build that strength and trust so that you're more likely to be able to have challenging conversations.
So with respect to the Victorian evaluation, did you evaluate whether there was less use of pornography, whether there were less, there was less acting out, whether there was less absence of consent in sexual relationships, whether there was less violence against women?
No.
Okay. So what was evaluated then?
So it's an evaluation of the impact of the teaching and learning that was done in that programme. So was it, were the children learning the things that were intended to be taught in the programme? Were relationships improving? Did their understanding of the key topics improve over time? So it was evaluating the delivery and the impact of that programme on young people's understanding and on their relationship with teachers and also on teachers' confidence in delivering that material. So it wasn't looking at those other issues and I'm not 100% sure how you would even be able to do that from a research perspective.
Yeah, yeah. I think respect education is vitally important. I suppose the question that I'm struggling with is, given the power of the visual and given the impact of pornography on non-consensual sexual models, what sort of education do we need to be able to successfully challenge that in young people's thinking about sexual relationships?
Yeah, I mean, and that's why the education in respectful relationships education that we propose is very much focused on those questions of power and consent and respect and empathy for other people. So that where you see violations of those things, you can identify them and you can think critically about this not being the kind of material that you want to access or that you want to share because it does violate those key principles that you've been helped to understand.
Unless it's the neuroscience teachers, the prefrontal cortex has been so compromised by exposure to pornography that you can't think clearly about those issues. So, yeah, it's something we need to struggle with, I think, isn't it?
Okay, I've got a couple of other questions about technology.
Okay, I've got a couple of other questions about technology. So for Nat, can you talk about potential difficulties, I think? We've had some suggestions about age restrictions or access restrictions and I think in your submission, you talk about the problems with that. So I wondered if you could speak a bit to that. So why can't we just, you know, say under 18s, no access, et cetera?
Yes, that would be the ideal situation, if we could just do it that way and ensure it worked perfectly. But there are a number of issues with this of mandatory age verification. So there's sort of five ways that, five main ways that mandatory age verification has been proposed to be carried out. The first one, which is already in place, is just self-declaration where you enter a pornography website and you tick a box to say, yes, I'm over 18. That's already widely in place across many pornography websites and it does nothing to prevent young people from accessing it. All the other proposed methods are much more invasive, so they require either providing some sort of ID to verify your age, providing either directly to the pornography site, to providing it to some sort of third-party verification service, cross-checking the user's identity in another database. So for example, checking that the person's already on the electoral roll, for example, that would prove that they're over 18, things like that. And then the last and most invasive proposed method is biometric testing, where a photo, you know, some sort of computer programme tries to estimate your age based off a photo. So all these have problems with the data being misused from either the pornography company itself, because, you know, it's quite a dangerous thing to have your own ID tied to your pornography viewing habits. And we think there's a great risk of first data misuse by the pornography companies who sell that on to advertisers and then also by the potential risk of data breaches and data leaks. And in our submission, we refer to the case of Ashley Madison, which was an online dating service specifically designed for people to have affairs and that had a big data breach in 2015. Tens of millions of accounts got leaked and that led to all sorts of issues around relationship breakdown and even several suicides as a result. So we see that having sensitive identity information tied to pornography, it's a very dangerous invasion of privacy, which we don't think is just. Additionally, we just don't think it will be effective because what's to stop a young person using a different device, using someone else's account, all these sorts of issues? So, well, it's a nice idea and it has large public support from the Australian public. It's, we don't recommend it and nor does eSafety.
Okay, we're nearly out of time, but I'm quick.
Can I ask a very quick follow-up?
Yes, of course.
Because it's exactly on this topic, please. Any law that an Australian jurisdiction puts in place on either internet service providers or pornography websites is going to require that website or that internet service provider to recognise that you're accessing that site from Australia. I know that some people use VPNs to get around that. How easy is it for young people to use the internet through a VPN?
Well, very easy. And young people have grown up in an environment that is surrounded by technology. They know how to use this stuff. They know how to use it maybe to access certain websites at school that they wouldn't be able to. And so they can definitely do that with pornography. So we go back to our point that you can't really easily, sorry, you can't easily ban this, but you can educate on what they are seeing and what role that plays in their lives and what that means and, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you all so much for your appearance today, your submissions and for the other information we've asked on notice. We very much appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Name, title and author affirmation.
Melinda Tancard-Reese, I'm the co-founder and Movement Director of Collective Shout! For a World Free Of Exploitation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And we might go to Ms Gordon.
Veronica Gordon, Youth Participation and Sector Development at Youth Action. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Lauren Stracey, CEO at Youth Action. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Melissa Abigazala, Founder and Managing Director of the Topblokes Foundation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Daniel Allers, the New South Wales State Manager for the Topblokes Foundation. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And can I ask if any of you have opening statements? Yes, we do. We might start with Ms Tancard-Reese.
The pornography industry is significantly responsible for the harmful sexual socialisation of a generation of young people. The world's largest Department of Education has contributed to rising rates of violence against women, harmful sexual behaviours, peer-on-peer sexual abuse at levels never before seen. A generation of boys are being exposed to rape porn, sadism, torture, incest porn of the click of a button. The French equality watchdog has found 90% of porn features violence against women, with much of it amounting to torture. Thirty to sixty percent of all incidents of childhood sexual abuse are carried out by other children and young people. Data from the landmark Australian Child Maltreatment Study states child sexual abuse by known adolescents is by far the most single, most common category of offending. Professor Michael Salter in his Childlight submission says the widespread availability of pornography appears to be driving the increased perpetration of sexual violence by children, particularly boys. Girls report routine sexual harassment and abuse by male students, touching, rape threats, sexual bullying, body shaming, sexual moaning, sexual gestures and boys trying to choke them. Boys commonly share porn at school, airdropping it to kids on the bus, sending girls live masturbation videos. Seventy-nine point nine percent of teachers were seeing more sexualised behaviours in school from students as young as year twelve, including children simulating sex acts on other children as documented in our Sexual Harassment of Teachers Report released late last year by Collective Shout! and author and parenting expert Maggie Dent. Many teachers identified pornography exposure as a significant driver of the rise in harmful sexual behaviours in schools. One said, "I believe there is an increase in disconnect between women as human beings and women as objects, and I attribute this corrosion of respectful and boundary-driven relationships to unfettered access to pornography. We urge you to use every lever at your disposal to ameliorate these harms."
Thank you very much. And perhaps if I could go to Ms Gordon or Ms Stracey?
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us to speak today on Gadigal land. I pay my respects to elders past and present. My name's Lauren Stracey and I'm the CEO of Youth Action. I'm here today with my colleague Veronica Gordon. Youth Action welcomes the opportunity to appear before the Standing Committee on Social Issues Inquiry into the impacts of harmful pornography on mental, emotional and physical health. We're the peak body that represents young people and the services that support them in New South Wales. It's important to note that the extent of pornography's influence on young people's beliefs and understanding of relationships and sexuality really requires further investigation. Noting that young people are not a homogenous group and their own unique circumstances and identities determine how they consume and interpret information, it's important that all future decisions relating to pornography and young people are made collectively with them and where possible, educational and support programmes are youth-led. We therefore make the following recommendations for your consideration: that the New South Wales Government undertake a review of the existing programmes in New South Wales that address pornography use by young people and the way that it influences their approaches to respectful relationships; that the New South Wales Education Standards Authority review the current stimulus in New South Wales as it relates to consent and respectful relationships education to include content about pornography; that the New South Wales Government strengthen and expand state funding for accessible resources for parents; and that provisions are made to ensure that young people are given sufficient opportunity to advise government on issues relating to them, that their voices are heard by decision-makers and that their experiences are considered essential in the decision-making process. In consultation with young people, we've heard that pornography and other sexualised images, highly sexualised images are being shared via messages from peers and occasionally from people that they don't know on media platforms such as Snapchat. They also told us that they're viewing pornography inadvertently through pop-ups and advertisements in video games and social media sites. In our consultation with the youth sector, representatives emphasise that pornography is really easily accessed. It's often being viewed prior to a young person's first sexual experience and is unrealistically and at times negatively colouring young people's perceptions of what healthy relationships look like. To quote some of our members from our consultation, "Easy access to pornography has shifted perceptions of privacy and normalised the idea of monetising one's body among young people." The portrayal of sex and relationships in pornography can distort young people's understanding of healthy interactions, leading to misguided beliefs about consent and sexual norms. Thank you again so much for having us here today.
Thank you very much. Topblokes.
Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Abigazala and I'm the Founder and Managing Director of the Topblokes Foundation. I work closely with teachers, parents and our team of youth workers to deliver mental health and wellbeing programmes directly to young males. I'm joined today by my colleague Daniel Allers, New South Wales State Manager. We welcome the opportunity to appear before the committee as part of the inquiry into the impacts of harmful pornography. Topblokes is a youth mental health charity supporting young males aged ten to twenty-four years. Our qualified youth workers deliver three-to-six month mentoring programmes across schools and communities. Since 2006, we've worked with over 25,000 young males across New South Wales and Queensland, including 2,500 in New South Wales last year alone, providing a safe space to explore identity, relationships and the challenges they face in today's digital world. Through our work, we've seen first-hand how pornography is shaping young males' understanding of sex, relationships, masculinity and consent, often before they've had any real-life experience. Many of the young men we mentor tell us they want to talk about pornography, but shame, stigma and a lack of trusted adults make it difficult. Without open conversations, they struggle to separate fact from fiction and the unrealistic expectations set by pornography can impact their mental and physical health, their relationships and their understanding of healthy intimacy. They tell us that pornography isn't showing them the whole picture. It distorts their understanding of consent, boundaries and emotional connection. Many admit they've never seen a conversation about consent in pornography and they express surprise when they learn about its potential impact on their mental health, sexual expectations and relationships. Every day, we see young males show up with curiosity and enthusiastically engage in conversations around the harmful impacts of pornography. They don't want judgement. They want guidance, education and a space to ask questions. Importantly, young males have unique perspectives and insights that can help solve the challenges of harmful pornography. Their voice is valuable and they make meaningful contributions. While we are here today representing the voices of young males that we work with, we're delighted to help connect you directly with young males on this issue. Young males are ready to talk, to share their experiences, their ideas and to help design solutions that reduce the harmful impacts of pornography on the next generation of young people. Thank you and we will look forward to your questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for those statements and for appearing today. Maybe to start with top blokes. So we've had discussions in earlier sessions today about sort of accidental exposure versus, I guess, deliberate exposure to pornography. And I wonder, is that something that features in your discussions with young men? Sort of differences in how you approach the conversation, differences in what they're talking about or what their concerns are? If you could talk a bit about that, that would be helpful.
Definitely. I'll hand it over to Daniel in a second. What has definitely come through very clearly is young males sharing, often the first times that they have come across pornography, and it often is accidental. It may be accidental as part of their use of online games, but also in the playground with older teens and older siblings, older cousins as well. So we've got to look at it both from an online perspective, being accidentally exposed, as well as to those that are around them in their personal lives.
Yeah, I think the way we go about that, talking to young men about the online space as a whole, not just around pornography as well, but certainly violent content or content that's maybe against their values, is really important that we have that conversation and sort of go back to what are our values, what are the things we want to be seeing. And I think same with pornography and relationships, when we dive down into what do you actually want to get out of these experiences of being online? You want to be educated, you want to have fun, you know, and you want to feel safe, whereas if you're starting to click things where you're feeling unsafe or you're feeling like it's not somewhere you should be, then talking to an adult about this, talking with your friends, blocking, being curious about what people are actually sending you and not just clicking links, this is all part of a broader conversation with our young men.
Thank you for that. Youth Action, you engage with young people and you recommend investment in programmes which are delivered by independent facilitators. We've heard a lot about education delivered through the school curriculum by teachers and I wondered if, are you deliberately calling that out as something different and if so, why?
So, thank you. I think one of the things that we're really wanting to ensure is that all younger people have access to this information. So this would be really critical to ensure that we're connecting with those young people who may have disengaged from mainstream schooling or have somehow kind of missing that school-based curriculum. So it'd be about looking at how do we actually invest in both things. And what we're hearing from the sector, with the youth workers particularly, who work specifically with these kinds of young people who may not be engaging in mainstream schooling, is that they're really needing support to be able to deliver information to them as well. So it's really just about ensuring that there's a cross-section of information that's accessible to all young people.
Right, okay. And I note that in your submission, you talk about it, indicate that people from the youth sector have raised concerns about the normalisation and casualisation of certain language being used by young people, particularly young men and boys. And this might be something I ask Collective Shout! in a minute as well. Can you tell us more about this and how you feel that relates to pornography and how youth workers are addressing that?
Yeah, so certainly what we're hearing from the sector and from youth workers is that there has been a change in the way that they are speaking about sexual activities and that kinds of thing, and that there's a connection to their capacity to engage with pornography. So I think for us, what we'd be really keen for is further investment in being able to understand the nuances of that and that the youth sector is really needing some support to be able to support the young people to navigate that so that they're able to ensure that young people have appropriate language, that they're able to make meaning of what they're seeing more broadly and that they're really able to kind of have that, similar to what we heard from our colleagues this morning, have that critical lens to what they're seeing.
So when you talk about the type of language, you're talking about what exactly? Disrespectful ways of referring to certain groups or what in particular?
Yeah, so we're hearing, what the youth sector's talking about is the casualisation of it. So I guess that would be something to really unpack with the youth sector specifically about what the nuances are that they're hearing. What we've heard directly from them so far though is that it's been a language change and so that we'd be really keen to understand, you know, how is that changing and in what ways is that then impacting the way that young people might be thinking, feeling, behaving?
Thank you. I might go to Ms Tancard-Reese on this issue, I guess, of social norms or changes in social norms and what you think, I guess, harmful pornography contributes to that, but also what you describe as harmful and is that something that you separate from pornography that's not harmful?
Look, I might just start with that one and then get on to the core issues. We don't make that distinction, certainly not. And I don't know how many men are currently gobbling so-called ethical porn, you know, dolphin-friendly porn. It's, you know, likely to be tiny. And I have looked at some of that content. I've examined what some of the so-called ethical porn producers produce. And I personally do not think that mother-daughter incest lesbian porn constitutes ethical. So I'd like to share some stories that teachers have shared with us in the report that I've already referenced, the Sexual Harassment of Teachers Report. This came about as a result of a conversation between myself and the author and parenting expert Maggie Dent because we were seeing a rise of harmful sexual behaviours, sexual harassment in schools. And Maggie proposed the idea of a survey. A thousand teachers responded and we published the findings late last year. And interestingly, not one survey question specifically asked about pornography as a potential driver, but teachers themselves identified it. And I thought it might be useful if I shared what the teachers, some of the teachers said. Eleven years is the standard answer for regular porn viewing, airdropped to devices on public transport at school and to achieve child-watching extreme sexual violence in seconds. Year seven students accessing porn online and it seems to be normalising sexually harassing, sexualising harassment behaviours. Behaviours are becoming more covert, deviant and expressed digitally using graphically violent and pornographic videos. On simple group chats, start as homework groups and descend as the year wears on. Children showing other children porn, sexual noises, children choking other children in the playground, children simulating sex from behind on other children from the age of four. I've had to deal with an increase in sexual assault threats online, sexual images being shown and children being pushed to do sexual acts. Groaning, pressuring girls to send nudes, accidental touching of breasts during sport, commenting on appearance. Students in grade seven coercing girls into sending child exploitation material. I've had boys in year seven confess they are addicted to pornography. From my own experience, addressing thousands of students every year, the stories are getting worse and they're getting worse younger. There's more sexualised racist abuse of girls, including Asian girls who tell me, boys will say to them, "You're my dirty little sex slave." There is more violent, more rape threats. Rape threats was a significant theme in our report. Predatory and threatening attitudes. Girls in year seven being told by boys they will be raped. Older boys state they intend to rape their future partners when they grow up. Quote, "I had a student tell his girlfriend about his rape fantasies involving me. He also threatened to rape his girlfriend if she told anyone." They're just some of the examples that are in our Sexual Harassment of Teachers Report, which, you know, pornography is identified as a driver of these behaviours.
Could I maybe go to top blokes again? And you said that, and from your submission and from your opening statement, that, you know, young men are talking to you about and recognise. What's your response to... What's your response to particularly that last bit of evidence from Collective Shout about that survey? What are you seeing? What are young men saying in terms of how they feel about being involved in that kind of activity?
So when we talk to a young man about this, what we find is a lot of the times they're parroting what they've seen, as we said, the drivers being pornography, what they're seeing in pornography is what they're sort of copycating. So with our program, for example, we spend a lot of time talking about what is a healthy relationship. And more importantly, what do you want from your relationship with? And when we start to talk to the boys about them wanting connection, them wanting to build trust, we can then break this down and say, well, when you're displaying these sorts of behaviors, do you think you're actually showing respect? Are you building trust? Are you building connection? And we can really start to break that down. And those walls fall down pretty quickly. And the boys are very, very curious about this. They're sort of just, they're very quick to parrot what they're seeing around them. And so what we really have to do is give them a mirror to say, "Look, is this behavior you're doing actually working for you and helping you build those connections?"
I have a question which any of you could answer, but maybe we'll keep with top blokes for now. Is, because this behavior is, according to the survey that we've just heard, is being seen, how do you walk that line between, punishment's the wrong word, but at least admonishment for what is unacceptable behavior? And I guess getting an understanding of what to do differently? Because you can't, I presume at school, you're not going to let students go around and behave that way if you hear about it. So how do you walk the line between, you know, this is not okay and still getting students to be receptive enough to an alternative view?
It really comes back to curiosity. You have to be curious about why. Like, and so when, it's, obviously we have to call out bad behavior when we see it, and we will, we're always, particularly when we're seeing, you know, really negative comments from boys. But if we really break down and say, "Why are you saying this? Like, what are you trying to get and why do you believe that?", then we can get to the root cause. I think particularly when we're talking to boys and young men, trying to be a bit trauma-informed of thinking, "Why is this behavior happening?", and starting to ask them and get them to tell us and explain to us why, then they really are starting to think about their own behavior.
And if I could add to that, you know, we all have the goal of wanting to achieve behavior and attitudinal change. And I think it's really important to acknowledge that doing that can't just happen over one conversation or a short period of time. And I think when we start to think about solutions or encouraging or helping young males to adjust their behavior or their attitudes, that has to be an ongoing conversation that takes place over time. And, you know, as to what Daniel said, by the time our program gets to the workshop that centers on pornography, we've had, like, I think, two months already working with these young males. And we've also got to meet young men where they're at. And for us, where we find it to be particularly impactful is when we start to help young males understand the impact that it's having on themselves. And I think what's really interesting is that young males shared, you know, as part of the focus group that we ran, is that even though they may be parroting what they're seeing, often when they actually start to think about it, it might not actually be something that they personally desire doing either. And so when we meet them where they're at, that is the sort of best opportunity we have to break down some of these barriers, build the trust with them, but help them then to adjust and, you know, form healthy habits over, you know, the next little while. And I think what's definitely come through with the focus groups that we ran is that young males do want to adjust their behaviors, they can. And they do report back that their consumption of pornography does change after learning more about its impacts.
Thank you.
Yeah, could I please add to that? Thank you. I agree everything, with everything just said, but I'd also like to look at the legal obligations of schools who have a duty of care to provide a safe educational environment. And unfortunately and frequently, that is not being met. Schools have become sites of abuse. There is not one school that I go into and work with where girls do not report being subjected to daily sexual intrusions, demands for nudes, sent dick pics, threatened with rape if they don't send nudes, subjected to moaning and groaning noises in the classroom, in the schoolyard, at the school camp, on the school bus. I talked to eight and nine-year-old girls who say, "I do not feel safe at school" because the sexual harassment has become so rife. And what's been happening, and the teachers in our Sexual Harassment Report said there were not enough consequences, there weren't clear policies and procedures, there weren't clear frameworks for addressing harmful sexual behaviors. As a result, girls were disempowered and boys were emboldened. The teachers in our book, our report, wanted to see intervention at much earlier stages before the behaviors escalated. It doesn't serve boys to allow them to engage in routine sexual harassment at school. It's not setting them up well for life either. Schools do have this duty of care, but teachers testified to a lack of consequences. And as a result, we are seeing more girls saying they don't want to go to school. I believe that these behaviors are a significant factor in the rise of absenteeism and school refusal in girls, because I've had girls, they say to me, "They experience school as a hostile environment." Female teachers, more female teachers leaving the profession. I spoke to three in a row last year, young teachers, fresh out, freshly graduated. They haven't lasted six months. They're propositioned, they're sexually groaned at, moaned at, they've had photos taken down their blouses, under their skirts. They've been turned into AI deep fake image-based sexual abuse, deep fake sexual abuse, and those images have been shared. And girls also, this is happening too, boys are creating these images using social media profiles of girls and female teachers, but also the school's photos and morphing those into porn and selling them. So schools have become an unwelcoming and hostile environment for many female teachers and many girls. And schools need to be reminded of their duty of care obligations to provide safe educational environments.
Thank you. I'm going to hand over to my colleague, Ms. Carter.
Thank you. A follow-up question on that, Ms. Tankard-Reis. We've heard a lot of evidence today that education is key. And we've heard evidence of new curricula that have been developed by NESSA and the Department of Education. If, as your survey reports, sexual harassment, sexual abuse is a reality for teachers in many of our schools, does that compromise the teacher-student relationship? How would teachers go about teaching respectful relationships, teaching appropriate attitudes to porn if they're not being respected in the classroom because of the consequences of porn?
Well, that's exactly right. The teachers over and over again said they could not do their job. They could not execute their role as educators because of the highly sexualized environments in which they were trying to teach and which had eroded respect for them as teachers. They felt ill-equipped to teach respectful relationships and consent programs because they said that too often porn wasn't addressed. And so they lacked confidence to teach in an authoritative way because they often felt that one of the key drivers fueling harmful sexual behaviors wasn't being addressed, but their own authority was being undermined all the time by boys wolf-whistling, propositioning them, following them, stalking them, turning them into nudes, these highly sexualized behaviors, which eroded the teacher's ability to teach. And, you know, even the best consent and respect program cannot compete with the largest department of education in the world, which is the global porn industry. It's too much responsibility just on parents or just on schools. You know, this needs a whole-of-community approach and it needs the reining in the regulation of an industry which has caused this level of harm.
Well, if teachers will have difficulty addressing it in schools, how do we proceed? What are your recommendations for appropriate measures we should be putting in place?
Well, you'll find our recommendations in our submission. I also commend to the committee the recommendations in the Childlight submission by our colleague Professor Michael Salter. And in addition, we recommend the just-released recommendations of a UK report, Creating a Safer World: The Challenge of Regulating Online Porn, by Baroness Birkin, which was released just last month, February 27. We did produce a link to that. Those recommendations cover tackling violence against women and girls, creating a culture of positive masculinity, increasing accountability and onus on platforms for harmful pornographic content, protecting those most vulnerable to exploitation and harm, strengthening enforcement of pornography offenses, future-proofing against tech-enabled harms, strengthening governance and oversight. If I could break it down into some really specific things that, in my experience, need to happen really quickly based on my engagement in schools. And that is that there's gaps. There's gaps in policies, procedures, protocols. There's gaps in codes of conduct. There needs to be clear expectations set so that students know what is inappropriate behavior, what is appropriate behavior, what is the school expect of students. The other big gap is that schools have sexual harassment policies, but they apply teacher-to-teacher and teacher-to-student. They don't apply peer-to-peer and student-to-teacher. Rarely do I find a school that has that kind of policy. That's a big missing piece. There are also barriers to reporting. Students do not feel safe to report harmful sexual behaviors. They don't feel that either they're believed, they don't feel that they can do it anonymously. They're afraid of punishment and pushback and penalties. Female teachers were afraid of that as well in our report. And so we're not even really getting close to the extent of harmful sexual behaviors because many girls don't even report those in the first place because they fear the consequences. Look, so many things need to be done. We are on the Stakeholder Advisory Group for the Age Verification Trial. Collective Shout spearheaded an open letter to the federal government with 50 leading child safeguarding and women's safety experts to reverse the government's previous decision against an age verification trial. That's part of it. But, you know, it really needs an entire societal reform if our young people are going to have any hope at all, including boys who are being preyed on and groomed by a predatory, profit-driven global industry.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Fang, I think you've got one before we go to Dr. Con.
Thank you. Ms. Tankard-Reis, thank you very much for appearing today. Thank you to all the witnesses for appearing today. I was just listening to the evidence you gave to one of my colleagues earlier and I just wanted to just come back to some of that evidence, if you wouldn't mind, because it's slightly concerning. Did you say you were sitting with three teachers and that they indicated that they had been effectively sexually assaulted by their students?
Well, they've certainly been propositioned, they've been threatened with rape. They've been told, for example, "Miss, why do you love cock so much? Miss, you've got a mouth that belongs on Pornhub." Just to give you a couple of examples. I've had teachers tell me they called the C-word every day and when they reported that to the education department in your state, they were told that was beneath the level of reporting.
Could I also just check? Oh, sorry, I know there's a little bit of delay.
Examples of three young female teachers. But there are vast numbers of female teachers leaving this profession. Teachers in our report were leaving and the process of leaving or had already left.
In relation to the evidence you gave earlier, you said that there was, I think, images that were taken of them, sexually explicit images, but also that those images were turned into deep fakes in effect? Was that those three teachers that you were referring to?
No, that wasn't all of those teachers. One of those teachers told me that she discovered that her image had been turned into a deep fake. So these aren't sexual explicit images to begin with. They are images taken from social media or school photos. And they are morphed into pornography, which we call deep fake sexual abuse, image-based sexual abuse, through using easily available AI tools. So there are 127 nudifying and undressing apps which will nudge any woman or any girl. There's no regulation, there's no laws, they're advertised on social media. And then those images are shared. I was in one school where those images were being sold to boys in other schools.
Just in relation to...
Sorry, Ms. Tankard-Reis, it's very hard. No, no, it's very, it's very hard with the delay.
Very hard with the delay. So I just wanted to...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't hear you properly.
I just wanted to dive down a little bit onto what you indicated, that there were, I think, three teachers that had either photos taken down their tops or up their skirts, et cetera. Was that three teachers that you indicated that had occurred to?
Look, I've heard that more than once.
But in relation to the three women that you spoke of earlier, was that the three of them?
Those three, I can't recall if that had involved an up-skirting or down-blousing issue. But I've certainly spoken to teachers that that has happened to.
Okay, because what concerns me is that if that is the case, that's obviously effectively sexual assault. Those matters are effectively police matters now and they should be reported. And I guess that's where I was, I was trying to just sort of dive back into that. And I can see you're unsure about your answers now, but I was interested more about the response in relation to that because obviously if those things are occurring to a teacher and they're not reported, it's almost an affirmation to the young men to say, "Well, you know, I've gotten away with this now." You know, is this going to be a problem, you know, will it compound later if it's not brought to attention, I guess, in the school?
That's exactly the case. But, I mean, I hear hundreds of accounts, hundreds of stories, and often nothing is done. I mean, we know this generally with survivors of...
But who's not doing these things? Who's not taking action here? If it's teachers that are having this action, you know, done against them, they should not, they should be, in effect, taking action because otherwise if they don't, it will allow the problem to compound, will it not?
I agree with you 100%, but there's many systematic problems which contribute to women and girls either not reporting or not being believed or not getting the necessary action. Some schools, sorry, I have COVID, by the way. If I need to take some questions on notice, I may have to, I may have to do that. It's why I'm not with you.
Given you were COVID, would you mind just taking on notice the three, just providing some details about the three teachers that you referred to?
Generally, I can certainly say that our Sexual Harassment of Teachers Report documents that teachers often did not feel safe to disclose. They were told, "Boys will be boys, I just ignore it and it'll go away. Don't make a fuss about it or it'll get, or it'll get worse." There's a continuum of behaviors. But, you know, all of it constitutes sexual harassment, all of it is against...
Sorry, I might just take the chance to stop you there. One, because I can see the pressure on your throat to give you just a second, but also because I need also to get, give my other colleague an opportunity to ask some questions. So thank you, and if you've got some water handy. Dr. Con.
Thank you. So particularly to the witnesses talking about young people today. I'm sort of aware there's a risk that well-intentioned interventions for young people can have the unintended consequence of actually increasing stigma or discouraging young people from then reporting to a trusted adult if they come across something that's unsafe or dangerous. How do you recommend we go about engaging with young people in a way that won't increase stigma?
Ms. Tracy, do you want to... Oh, sorry, did you direct that?
Sure, I'm happy to address that one. I think what we would recommend at Youth Action is really taking a rights-based approach to any of this. So making sure that whatever sort of reform, policy decisions we're making and whatever sort of programs that we're wanting to engage with or develop, that it's really having the young people's voices centered so that we can actually hear from them directly. What would be the things that might be a barrier to you being able to authentically share your position? What would kind of facilitate that? One of the things that we know is that young people's, like, our relationships with young people are going to be the biggest and most powerful way to make any of these sort of changes. And so being able to center their voices in it and then also being able to wrap around that, the voices of the youth sector that is supporting them, parents, teachers, carers, and also the education, that I think would be able to then best address that kind of nuances of both being able to ensure that we're creating systems and processes and programs that are going to elevate the needs and being able to really engage with those quite difficult conversations and challenging conversations, while also being ensured that we are able to have that being supported by a really well-informed and educated support system around them.
I think one thing to really add, particularly with young men, is each interaction you have with a young man, when they come to you and tell you something that's important to them, how they feel when they walk away from that conversation is really important. So if they don't feel like they were safe in telling you small... don't feel like they were safe in telling you small things or little things, pieces of information, when it comes to something big that they've experienced online or things that are happening to them, they're not going to then come back to you. So what's really important is building those relationships, like little by little. So for us, in part of our programme of sending text messages to parents to say, "Today we spoke about alcohol, have a chat about this. Today we spoke about mental health," it's building up that, almost a muscle between that relationship between parents, so that when something big happens, or that something really makes them feel unsafe, they're going to be able to come forward and share that. So really taking every opportunity to make sure they felt like they've been heard, listened to, and trusted.
Can I have one more?
Yes, certainly.
We've also had a lot of evidence about the value of schools-based education, and particularly some with strong evidence from other states. Both of you have advocated for, in addition to that, support or education, and that's provided outside of schools, and hoping you could speak to that.
So can I just clarify the question? So you're wanting to...
Yeah, so we've spent a significant portion of the day talking about schools-based education programmes, and we've had some really strong evidence about that. I'm interested in the need for, in addition, educational support for young people outside of schools.
Right, yeah, sure, thank you. I think one of the things that we're hearing from the sector really strongly is that they need greater support to be able to do that education piece with young people that don't necessarily engage in mainstream schooling, or maybe on top of as well. So that there's some really wonderful work happening in schools, and there's some opportunity to elevate and develop that further. But there's also a whole other sort of place where education and that sort of cultural change essentially that we're talking about could occur. And so that's where the youth sector, in the way that they engage with young people in that kind of soft-entry, less kind of formalised way, have some real power. And then the other part is parents and carers as well. So being able to have aligned conversations in multiple ways, in ways that are meaningful for young people. And I think one of the things that we're hearing really strongly from the sector is that we really need to invest in some greater consultation to really understand what we need to do, because it's just a constantly evolving space. It's a place where these changes are happening quite rapidly, and we have a lot of opportunity to have really positive impact through those relational places that we have with young people.
Definitely. Parents will often tell us that they like the confidence and the skills, but they know the likelihood of their young male or their child accessing pornography is probably there. And I think there, I think there is a real opportunity to increase the level of resourcing. There is some resourcing that already exists, there is more opportunity to do that. But I think, sort of, in our experience, as well as running our mentoring programme, we ask young men to identify a trusted adult in their life, who then receives a weekly SMS from top blokes encouraging that person to have a conversation with their young men about the content or the topic. And we have an SMS specifically around pornography, and what we do is we ask the trusted adult to ask their young men about the four Cs. And so it's a piece of content that, and what's most important about that is that it is building that level of, I guess, respect and curiosity from the adult in the situation to the child, and inviting that child in into an open conversation. And I think that is really important, to be able to give young people the confidence that they can have a conversation with their parent. And what's really interesting is that, as a result, both parents and young males have shared that actually having that conversation wasn't as daunting or as awkward as what they felt. And there's more work to be done, being able to facilitate conversations between parents and young people, so that all the resourcing we put around it means that it's not just, we're not putting all responsibility on schools as the only avenue for education, but it should be happening in the homes and at a much earlier age.
Thanks, Chi.
Thank you. Thank you. We've reached the end of our time. We very much appreciate you all being here. I think we've had you as multiple offenders at various inquiries over the past six months, so...
Contributors is a better word.
Yes, contributors, excellent contributors. So we appreciate that very much. Ms Tankard-Reis, we appreciate you battling on there. We very much appreciate your contributions, and I think there were some things that were undertaken to be given to us on notice. The secretary will be in touch also if there's supplementary questions. Again, thank you so much for your work, your time, and your contributions today.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to this session of the hearing for the day. Thank you so much for being here. If we could start with the witnesses stating their name, position, title, and swearing an oath, or either an oath or an affirmation, I was trying to say both at the same time. If we start with you, Ms Quinn.
Thank you. It's Gemma Quinn, C of the Parents and Citizens Federation of New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Hi, Patrick Demony, Member Support and Research Officer at the Federation of Parents and Citizens Associations. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Anne Fionn, Chair of the Council of Catholic School Parents. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much. And would you like to begin by making an opening statement, perhaps with a PNC?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members of the committee, for having us here today to address this critical issue. In today's digital age, pornography is only a click away from our young people. Whether we like it or not, access to pornography has become almost inescapable. Today's youth grow up in a highly sexualised online environment. Where curious adolescents search for information about relationships or sex, they will often end up encountering pornography. This is a reality that we must confront head-on. Harmful pornography can be having a negative effect on young people's development, their mental health, and relationships. These harms are well documented and they are well known, and they underscore the urgency of the response here today. That said, it's also true that not all pornography is inherently harmful. There is pornography that is damaging to the young viewer, but there's also pornography that is consensual, ethically produced, and even educational in its intent. This nuance means that our approach must be a thoughtful one. When we tackle this issue for our young people, we need to distinguish between healthy and harmful content. We must meet the reality of our young people's access to pornography with education, guidance, and open dialogue. We strongly advocate for a comprehensive education about pornography, sexual health, boundaries, consent, media literacy, and critical thinking. It's integral throughout the schooling journey. We need to arm our young people and our adults with knowledge to navigate the digital landscape that we now thrive within. We adults must approach this uncomfortable topic openly and without shame. The responsibility is on us as parents, as educators, and as policymakers, to foster an environment where young people feel safe discussing what they encounter rather than hiding it. It's not easy to talk about pornography with our children, or our young people, or our students, but it is necessary. By investing in comprehensive sexuality education that includes frank discussions about pornography, by training our teachers and supporting our parents in this effort, and by addressing this issue without prudeness or panic, we can empower the next generation. We can give them the tools they need to critically evaluate what they see, to understand the concept of consent and respect, and to develop healthy relationships in spite of mixed messages online. In closing, I urge the inquiry to champion educational initiatives and policies that support open, shame-free dialogue about pornography and sexual health. Let us face this challenge together with courage and empathy for our young people.
Thank you, Ms Quinn. Ms Fang or Ms Garret Jones?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here at this inquiry. We thank our parents and carers who've provided information to us for our use in sharing it with you at this inquiry. We believe strongly that parents and carers are the first educators of their children, and whilst we acknowledge and support, increase in support for educators in their role, we also want to focus on the role of parents and carers in this space, and what is and isn't happening to support them. We have provided information in our submission about the general fears and lack of understanding, and the inability of some of our parents and carers to engage in this space with their children and young people. And we would strongly endorse, I guess, increased support for our parents and carers.
Thank you. If I can pick up on the key theme, both of today, but also of your statements and your submissions. So we're talking a lot about education and its role, and we're hearing that there's a school-based part of that, and then there's the role that parents or adults have, and you both, both organisations have just spoken about this. One of the things I've been wondering about, though, is what's the best, a school, it's obvious, the students are there, the teachers are there, the resources are there, you can build it into the curriculum. How, what do you think are effective ways of getting parents to understand, engage? Because I suspect it's not just a question of giving them resources, there's also an issue of understanding what their role is, do they see it as a problem? Maybe they don't, because maybe they use porn themselves. So how do we approach what is a much more diverse group of people in diverse settings than we have with children in a school, in a classroom? We might start with a PNC.
I think that's the advantage of using schools as a tool to communicate with parents. We know that in Parents and Citizens Associations in schools, that aspect of community and discussion with a principal, with leadership of a school, results in parents having a deeper understanding not only of what their children are doing in school, but what role a parent has to play in complementing curriculum. I think that happens really effectively already, and I think if we were to invest in supporting our educators to have greater time and greater resources at hand to have those challenging discussions with parents, and to bring parents into the fold, we're going to see parents getting much more than they get from the online material that's currently already available. And there is amazing online content available. The ECDC Commissioner does a fantastic job, and indeed, we've run webinars for parents, and they are hugely popular. But two thousand parents attending an ECDC Commissioner webinar is a drop in the ocean compared to the number of parents we need to reach, and all of those parents have children in schools.
Thank you. Can you just, before we get to your response, can I just get a bit specific? So I always want to hear about engagement, and it's like, okay, but tell me what that looks like. So what does that mean? So we want to engage with parents at the school. What does that mean?
So I'll give you a concrete example. I was at a PNC meeting last week, where they have a standing item on their agenda, where the principal or someone in the school leadership will present on a topic to do with curriculum. Last week, they were talking about the initial lit programme, and what the parents gained from that was an opportunity to discuss firsthand with the people who are educating their children what the programme is, rather than just receiving a reader home at the end of the school week to read with their child over the weekend. It gave them the tools to better use the resource that's being sent home, because they understood it more deeply, having been given a crash course of sorts, one-on-one, in a small group with their teacher. That is something that we do have an opportunity to resource teachers to do, because it's what they're good at, and we see it now working in other areas. If we can equip them to have these, what can be really challenging conversations with parents, they are going to, I'm sure, be able to rise to that challenge.
Thank you.
I think I agree with a lot of what Gemma said, absolutely. But I guess, from my concern is, whilst we talk about increasing resources for teachers, we already know, and as an ex-teacher myself, teachers are already under the pump. They're already doing a lot of the parenting, and we know that we've got issues with actually attracting and retaining teachers. So to actually add this into their little platter of what they have to do, whilst I agree with it, I think that it's going to be fraught. There's going to be concerns about how do we actually do that? I guess, and I love the example you've given about a PNC, certainly from Catholic schools, and within our remit, we have been working really hard to shift the focus away from traditional PNF associations, which is the equivalent to PNC. We've worked really hard to shift towards a model which authentically engages parents and carers in their child's learning, by doing exactly that, by having an educative piece within a meeting where parents' capacity is built and they're upskilled. And issues around consent to sexual relationships absolutely could be dealt with in that space. But I guess the challenge is, where does that information, where does that material come from? We too have ECDC, we had one last week in ECDC, and we had over five hundred. So for one in five kids in Catholic schools, that percentage is pretty good. I actually did a whole, and I thought, oh, we're probably on par with you guys in terms of the parents that we're attracting. But it's always the problem, and I'm sure Gemma will agree, the problem is that group of parents that aren't engaged.
That's going to be my next question.
You know, we can preach to the converted all we want, but what we're really concerned about is that group, that segment of parents that are not engaged. So how do we attract those? And I think it does require, I listened to the previous speakers, and they spoke about talking to students about what they need, getting their opinion. It takes work to identify, A, those parents, and find out why they're not engaging, what are their barriers. We've actually done some work around that, to identify those parents and find out what it is that's preventing you from engaging in your child's school. For many of them, it's time commitments, it's around childcare. They're the sorts of things that are presenting them with problems and issues. And I dare say that this issue, the impact of pornography, and actually upskilling and building parent and carrier capacity in that space, will be like any other issue that we try and build capacity of parents in. We are going to have difficulty accessing those parents if we don't remove the barriers. I also, I do agree that schools are that central hub in a community. They are the space that parents and carers go to, because generally, the majority of our kids are engaged and enrolled in some, whether it's a Catholic independent or government school, we have a small percentage who are home schooled, but the majority of our children and young people are enrolled in schools. And so it is naturally a hub. And to engage with other youth services and bring their support in is fantastic, in much the same way we'd engage ECDC or any other not-for-profit. But the challenge is always going to be engaging with those parents and carers, and how do we do that?
Can, sorry, can I just pause there? Only because, I'm sure you'll have an opportunity to keep going on those lines, I'm conscious that my colleagues will want to ask questions as well, so I'll hand it over to Ms Garret.
Perhaps I can take you on a slightly different tack. We've heard a lot of evidence, and I think there's furious agreement that this is an issue in which parents need to be involved. How you get all parents involved is a big question. Schools need to be involved, and the appropriate model, how we find the time, how we resource the teachers to do it, whether we also invite skilled experts from outside to come in and do it. But there's a third piece, and I'm wondering what your views are on this, and that is the extent to which, and I think this would be a piece to stop or delay accidental exposure to pornography rather than intentional seeking it out, the extent to which some form of regulation, either regulation of pop-ups in games, or regulation of the way in which certain material is delivered, age verification, to what extent that is also a piece that we need to be exploring.
Well, I think they go hand in hand, so do our parents. They do believe that work goes hand in hand. We also are on the Age Assurance Roundtable as well, we have representation at that. From the surveying of our parents, there was definitely support for further government regulation around access. That was clear, parents wanted that support. And I think the request for that comes from parents' own feelings of inadequacy around how to manage social media. It's growing at a pace faster than they can understand. And so parents and carers feel, I think, helpless in many ways to actually do the regulating themselves. They're unsure of how their kids are accessing some of this material, and need support. So yeah, I do think that parents, certainly from our perspective, are seeking that.
Ms Quinn, Mr Demony, do you have a...?
I think that, thank you for the question, I think that there is a call from parents to seek regulation to support them in this endeavour. But I agree that it is out of a sense of desperation, this issue was too big to tackle. And I think that there could be a danger when we do introduce additional... And I think that there could be a danger when we do introduce additional regulation that it becomes a false safety net. We know that there are plenty of children who have very strict restrictions on their devices at home that still access accidentally pornographic material, and their parents are unaware because they feel they have done everything within their power to stop that access occurring. I know in my own experience, I've grown up as a digital native, and my first exposure to harmful pornography was in the playground from someone printing it out and bringing it to school. I think that we have to acknowledge that children are going to be exposed, they're being exposed younger and younger to this content, and any regulation that goes hand in hand must be done coupled with education. I don't think we can escape that.
Um, do you have a view whether parents feel that they can use the filtering devices and blocks that are available to be applied at home, or they're looking for the government to be introducing age verification or blocking certain types of sites or, or some other sort of across-the-board regulation?
I don't think that we could speak with certainty about how our parents feel about that beyond saying that when we surveyed them, they wanted support.
Okay, thank you.
I, I agree. I do think from the information we've gained that parents are lacking an understanding and don't feel confident in that space. Indeed, we've engaged with ECDC Commissioner, we, we do a regular every term webinar. One of our, um, approaches is to actually do a live version where devices are used by parents and carers. We then, online, as we go, we're going to talk you through the process. I think delivering of fact sheets are useful, but we also have parents, I spoke to a parent recently who is a professional, uh, he's from, um, uh, he's, uh, recently immigrated to Australia, has a child in one of our schools, and has absolutely no understanding that the ECDC Commissioner existed. The child asked for, you know, some particular technology, the parent had no understanding of what the technology was. And so we know that parents need to have access to information, but it's how do we deliver that that's most effective, I think that is the challenge.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr Fain, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, just, um, I don't want to take up all the time. Thank you. Um, just in relation to, I guess, any technology, um, filtering systems or, um, uh, methods of, of trying to suppress pornography to young people's computers, isn't it really the case that, um, young people generally will find a workaround probably quicker than the parents can actually implement a block? And so really, the only way that we're able to, um, manage this is through either parents or teachers or, um, sometimes peers, probably not the, the most ideal, um, way, but, uh, those people talking to the young people about what it is that they're seeing or viewing or, um, or trying to understand it. So that's, i- it's an education problem, this, it's not a technology problem because we're never really going to get to get ahead of them. Um, this is an education problem, is that a fair thing to say?
I would echo that.
Mm-hmm.
I think there's some truth in that, but I, I would question the technology as well. I would question that, I think there is a possibility that we can, if we have parents who are unable, incapable of managing, you know, the technology and how to manage those filtering systems, then I suspect that we've probably got a percentage of kids that are exactly the same. Not all of them, but some of them, I actually think a combination is best.
Would, would you, would you put money on the fact that?
No, I'm not gonna put money.
And, and so that's, that's the thing, isn't it? That, that, that where, where you, there's no guarantee that that's going to be the, um, answer to it. Isn't that the case then that we need to make sure that the kids are armed? Armed with either, either the imagery which they're seeing or the information to process and maturely, um, uh, understand what is they're watching on the screen, explaining to them that it's not, um, real life and that, you know, that, those are the tools that we need to have. Because, because, you know, whilst you say a percentage of young children may or may not be able to get around a block, um, I think the vast majority will, um, and probably do it quicker than the parents can implement it.
Quite possibly. But I'm, uh, what I'm saying is I think a combination of strategies is going to work best, rather than saying, forget about age assurance technology, or let's not bother looking at filtering and supporting that, let's just focus on education. Because as we've already discussed, the education's not going to get through to every parent either. We know that.
The, the, the last, I think, uh, point I'd make on that, though, is that ultimately, um, technology costs, and so technology implementation systems also cost. So, um, where some parents are certainly well off, um, there'll be other parents in, in lower socioeconomic areas that won't be as, um, able to perhaps, um, invest in those systems. Um, don't we need to make sure that we're capturing all in any, in any programme that we roll out?
But I think this is where our parents are saying they would like greater regulation in that space, they would like government to provide greater regulation.
But shouldn't, shouldn't parents be parents and, and not look to the government always to?
Absolutely agree with you on that, but the reality is, this is such a critical issue. You know, they, they're children and young people whose mental health and wellbeing is being significantly impacted.
I'm going, sorry, I, I thought you'd finished.
Yeah, sure.
I'm gonna pass over to Dr Con for some questions.
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you so much for being here today. Um, I had a question about respectful relationships education, and we had some evidence already this morning from the Department of Education, there's obviously an existing curriculum, we've heard about the ways that that's planned to be updated, um, in the next couple of years. Um, what's your view of, of, I suppose, existing respectful relationships education? I'm interested in, um, how that's being delivered, particularly in the non, non-government schools, um, and whether most of the Catholic schools are actually implementing that curriculum?
So, so there is work currently being done on that, um, and we are involved in that space as well, um, to be able to ensure that our students are receiving appropriate, um, education and what is required and needed for them. So our, our parents and carers would absolutely support, you know, education in that space, no issue.
Absolutely, and you, I appreciate this meaning to be taken on notice, but do you have any understanding for the elements of that curriculum that are optional?
I'd take that one on notice.
What, what proportion of the Catholic school sector is actually, um, opting into the, those parts of the curriculum?
I would take that one on notice.
Thank you very much. Yeah, and so, um, similar question to the PNC, but, um, what's your experience of the way that's been implemented?
I think that it's been, it's been effectively implemented for what it is. I think the changes that we're going to see are positive, and we were really pleased with the announcement. I think that something we can always do better is, and I hate to use the term engagement again, but I, I do think it's true, there is always in an education space, for us as parents, a role for parents to play in supporting what's occurring in a school, and I also think for children to be engaged in what they are learning in school. I think there is a really positive thing that comes out of, um, you know, notwithstanding the press this week, out of early childhood, I look to that sector and the way that it has championed, the voices of parents and children in rolling out educational frameworks in service, and I think that we can learn a lot from what comes out of that early childhood sector in terms of the benefits that there are from understanding from the people who are receiving of content, what they are getting from that content, and what they want to feed back into that content that they're being taught.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you. Uh, Ms Gar or Mr Fain, further questions?
I've got no further questions, no.
Um, I'll just return back to some of the questions I was, um, asking earlier, just in relation to, um, education of, um, students and what it is that they're seeing. Um, I guess from both perspectives, both the public system and, and private systems, that would, it would require the students to actually be attending school. What we've seen recently is an increase in the number of students that are actually, um, not attending school through, um, you know, any number of reasons. They're also the ones that are likely at home, perhaps using technology when parents aren't home. Um, they're probably the, the cohort that's more likely to be, um, impacted. Um, how do we reach them? How do we ensure that, that they're not, um, socially stunted in not only friendships, but also further on down the track in relationships, given that they're already not attending school, not have, building those, those social, uh, interactions, and then learning about, I guess, unhealthy, um, relationship interactions through online pornography? Ms Queen?
I think we need to be agile, and I need to, I think we need to utilise the spaces that children are in. I think the reality is a lot of young people consume content and educational content from places like TikTok, and I think that we need to, instead of taking a we'll build it and they'll come approach and come up with a new glossy app to sell them on education, we need to look at the reality of how they use technology.
And you know exactly where I'm about to go now, don't you? What if we ban kids from using social media until they're 16? How do we reach them then?
That is a very good question, and I think that I'm going to, uh, probably temper my response by, by simply saying that children need to have, as I, I believe it is a human right that children need to have access to safe spaces online. And I think that we need to be addressing the spaces that they have access to and how they use and consume content from those spaces. And whether that means restricting children's access to a space completely or addressing the content that comes through in that particular space is a, is an item for policymakers outside of the scope of my, my remit here.
Oh, but you bring, you bring a wealth of experience to the inquiry, and I guess I'm just posing these questions and not necessarily knowing the answers myself, but, um, you know, we, we've obviously spoken about, um, trying to reach kids where they are, and I think that's important, and the voice of children and young people is important, um, probably I've learnt that more in the last couple of years than anything else. Um, but I think that where you've got a cohort of, of students, and I think there was like half a million, um, students that are, um, resistant, um, in attending school, and where they might, where you might be able to reach them is through social media, and there's now, um, plans to block social media until 16. Um, where do they find that safe space that you spoke about? Where do they, um, where do they build those relationships, those, those friendship groups if they're not at school, not having those social interactions? And then how do we make that safe space, um, somewhere that they can learn about healthy, respectful relationships into the future? Um, and if, if social media is off the table, what then?
I think that something will fill the space of social media if children don't have access to it. We were involved in the, uh, you know, federal consultations regarding online safety, and our position was that, um, restriction, restricting access was not the best model of addressing harmful content that children have access to on social media platforms.
What, in that case, then, what do you think will fill the void? What do you think, do you think it'll be that, um, kids may work around any digital systems and either access social media through unauthorized ways? Or do you think that they may fill their time looking at things like pornography or, or other things that are, um, I guess, more harmful than social media? Is that a possibility here?
I think that children crave socialisation, and I think that children will find a method to receive that. I think that there are means of accessing other people beyond your social circle, like chat forums, that are incredibly potentially dangerous and.
More harmful.
Content. And I think that there is a risk that children will flow to those spaces. I think that's probably more of a risk than flow through to access to pornography, to fill the space of a lack of access to social media.
In the limited time we've got left, this, the Catholic?
Well, I think it's, I think there's two issues here. The first one is school attendance, which is totally separate to, I think, the issue around pornography, apart from the link between access to pornography and when it's taking place. And your suggestion that it's taking place primarily for those kids when they may be unsupervised at home by parents, which I, granted is possibly the case, I, I don't know, I don't have data on that. So I think firstly, the first issue is addressing non-attendance, why are students not attending, and what can be done about getting students to attend school? How do we improve our attendance rates, which we know have never recovered since COVID? So I think that's a separate issue, frankly.
Thank you so much. Um, that brings us to the end of our time today. We appreciate very much, um, you being here, your submission, and we may have asked you for things on notice, or you may have offered, so the secretary will be in touch, we may have supplemented questions. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
We now have a 15-minute break. Session of the hearing for the day. We will ask that you state your name, position, and, excepting one exception, give, swear an oath or an allegiance, affirmations, not allegiance, we're not asking you to swear that, just an oath or an affirmation. And we might start online with Mr Dunn.
Good afternoon. I'm Graham Edward Dunn. I'm the general manager of the Eros Association. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Dr Mulcahy?
Thank you. I'm Dr Shaun Mulcahy. I am the policy advisor at the Eros Association. And I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you very much. Mish Pony?
Hello, I'm Mish Pony, the CEO of Scarlet Alliance, Australian Sex Workers Association. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And Miss Devian, I note that you will give unsworn evidence to the committee as you appear under your professional name in order to protect your privacy. Evidence you give today in this hearing will still be protected by parliamentary privilege, but could you please state your name and position, title for the record?
I'm Darcy Devian, and I'm the policy officer at the Sex Workers Outreach Project, New South Wales.
Thank you very much. And could I ask if any of you have an opening statement to begin with? Yes, Ms, yes, okay. Well, we, we might, we might start online because I can see that you've, you're ready to go there, Mr Dunn, and it's hard to coordinate with online. So we'll start, start there.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. The Eros Association is Australia's industry association for adults-only retail, wholesale, media and entertainment. At the outset, we are concerned that in the framing of this inquiry, there may be a false implication that most pornography is inherently harmful or misogynistic, as suggested by the statements in the media release, that this form of pornography is common and mainstream, and the statement from the Women's Safety Commissioner that pornography often contains harmful messages and representations that normalise violence against women. We support positive sexual expression. Consuming pornography is a healthy and normal part of human sexuality and does not deserve the moral condemnation it has received from some, from some uninformed critics. In a liberal and plural society, we hold to the principle, under the national classification guidelines, that adults should be able to read, hear, see and play what they want. We should add, children should not be exposed to pornography. We continue to advocate for measures to restrict children's access to pornography that are privacy preserving and do not amount to a de facto ban on adults accessing pornography. We also hold to the finding of the Stevens Review of Australian Classification Regulation that restrictions in access to pornography should be based on harm. The recommendations in our submission reflect those principles, and we welcome the opportunity to speak to them further. Thank you.
Thank you. Mish Pony, would you like to speak?
Thank you. Scarlet Alliance is the peak national sex worker organisation for, in Australia, with members made up of individual sex workers, including porn performers, as well as sex worker organisations in each state and territory. Pornography is not an exceptional form of media and must be understood in the broader social landscape. Concerns about its harm, both for young people and its impacts on domestic violence, mirror past moral panics over movies and video games lacking strong evidence. Research does not support a link between porn and violence, and Australian research shows that young people do critically engage with pornography. And existing resources, such as WA Health's Talk Soon, Talk Often, and resources from family planning organisations, support them in doing so without shame or stigma. However, some other so-called porn literacy initiatives promote a sex-negative framework that misrepresents porn workers and reinforces outdated myths. Statements like porn sex is not safe sex, or porn bodies are not normal, fuel stigma rather than promote genuine health education. There is no agreed definition of harmful pornography, and attempts to define it often target BDSM and non-heteronormative practices. Some submissions point to reported increases in certain sex acts as evidence of harm, yet the issue is not the act itself, but the presence of consent and harm reduction strategies. Pornography is diverse, yet discussions remain fixated on a narrow subset of popular tube site content without evidence that this represents the majority of what is actually viewed. Porn is already highly regulated in Australia. The classification scheme restricts its sale and distribution, banning certain content, while the Online Safety Act grants the E-Safety Commissioner broad powers to regulate online content. Further restrictions, such as age assurance technologies, will disproportionately harm independent Australian content creators, while entrenching monopolies, which is bad for both workers and consumers. Claims that online pornography advertising is widespread are overstated and not backed up with evidence. In contrast, sex workers regularly face shadow banning and deplatforming, which sex worker organisations also experience in sharing educational and sexual health content. At the same time, porn performers and sex workers experience financial discrimination with targeted campaigns pressuring banks and payment platforms to deny services. Further regulation will not protect young people or reduce harm. It will only fuel stigma, harm livelihoods and consolidate existing industry monopolies. A harm reduction approach based on evidence rather than fear is essential. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms Devian?
Hi. Thank you for having us here today. Swap New South Wales are a peer-led organisation with the highest level of contact with New South Wales sex workers, including porn performers. We're grateful that the committee have invited us to give feedback on this inquiry, given it concerns members of our community. Swap New South Wales have serious concerns regarding the terms of reference for this inquiry. Failure to define violence and harm invites subjective moral scrutiny. We have already heard discussions in the media that characterise common LGBTQIA+ sexual practices as harmful, or perpetuate paternalistic ideas about what women ought to enjoy during sex. This then leads to legislative changes born out of moral panic. Research about the impact of porn is flawed by problems with terminology, methodology and positionality. When porn is subjected to stigmatising policymaking and media coverage, these conversations damage public opinion of the sex industry and in turn the health and safety of our community. After decades of research, a correlation between porn consumption and gendered violence has not been validated. In fact, pornography frequently offers an unusually diverse representation of ethnicity, gender, body types and sexualities. There is no evidence to show that the consumption of pornography has increased. Research refutes a link between porn consumption and addiction. Research suggesting that the consumption of pornography has a negative effect on body image is also highly contested. Sex workers are being used as a scapegoat for a national crisis of gendered violence. Sex and consent education for young people needs to be improved, and this responsibility should not fall on porn stars. Everyone should understand that pornography is a crafted performance, be able to critically evaluate it, consider in relation to their personal values and make informed decisions about their behaviour. Stigmatising and abstinence-based approaches to porn don't work and perpetuate harmful stereotypes about sex workers. Examples overseas show that age verification technology also doesn't work, as it's expensive to implement and young people can easily bypass it. The best way to respond to children's exposure to pornography is with open communication, discussion and fostering critical thinking. We see the New South Wales, we see the New South Wales Government's financial commitment to consent education as a positive investment. Swap New South Wales Two has a responsibility to community health and safety outcomes, so we appreciate you valuing our feedback.
Thank you very much, all of you, for those introductory remarks. Could I ask a question about, I guess, the sector or the industry itself? So we've got the industry association here, but we also heard from Mish Pony about monopolies or quasi-monopolies. I'm, I'm not clear, and it hasn't been clear to me from submissions, when we're talking about the content that's created, are we talking about sort of companies? Like, how much of the content that you can access online is created by a company, that's a production company that's doing this as a profession? or individuals uploading content? I'm not clear on that. I wondered if anyone has any information?
I'm happy to jump in and then maybe Eros has some clarifying remarks. So within Australia, it's definitely small, independent producers creating their own content. There might be a small handful of small companies within Australia, but the classification codes are so restrictive, it basically prohibits really any large-scale porn production within Australia. When you're talking about porn consumption more broadly, including international content created, I don't know and I don't think anyone can know. There is no way to capture who is watching what porn. Yes, you can look at one particular website like Pornhub and see what the most popular videos are, but that is no definitive answer as to what is actually being consumed around the world. People are consuming porn by downloading it illegally, by looking at X, looking at all those different sites that aren't captured when you just look at what are the most popular videos on Pornhub or the next most popular porn website.
Right, okay, thank you. And Eros Foundation, did you have anything to add to that?
I would agree with those comments. The, what do I call it, the industrial production of pornography in Australia, as far as we're aware, is quite low. And more recently, we've seen an explosion or a growth in online content that is created by sex workers and will appear on sites such as OnlyFans or will appear as streaming services or cam services. And that, as the Scarlet Alliance have pointed out, is a vast difference to international businesses such as Pornhub, RedTube, et cetera, et cetera, that the Australian public and the wider world is familiar with.
Can I ask a related question then? If, if we don't, when I say we're in Australia, there's, there's not really an industry as such, or not a large one, then if I can ask the Eros Association, quite a bit, I think of your submission was talking about industry codes and production standards. But really, that's then only something that's going to, going to apply to a very small amount of, of content, a very sort of niche and very small amount of content, isn't it?
Yes, the thing here is that the online safety standards and codes, which have recently been developed, the, the way that material is determined to be Class One or Class One C, which is illegal pornography, or even Class Two, which is legal pornography, falls over unfortunately into the online adult retailing sector where they don't have pornography as such on their sites. However, individual images, which might make up a tiny percentage of the products that they're selling online, which are mainly sex toys, a small number of individual images may constitute a rating by the, the current Phase One Guidelines and the currently being reviewed Phase Two codes may fall into a category that's either illegal or X-18+, or even R-18+. And the referral in the first part of Eros's submission to making the sale of X-rated content legal across Australia, that refers to the current laws where X-18+ in itself at a federal level is legal, but the sale of that material, certainly in a hard copy form, is illegal in all of the states, including New South Wales. Online content is totally different. Things are moving quickly, the Online Safety Act, there's been a review into the changes to the Online Safety Act, which requires the classification guidelines to be changed. And it also impacts the current, though still in existence, Phase One codes and standards and the soon-to-be implemented, I suspect, Phase Two standards. So there's this knock-on effect to the Eros Association, which these days, ninety percent of our members are retailers and wholesalers, and even though most of them might have a bricks and mortar presence anywhere within Australia, all businesses these days have an online business as well. So that's where it mainly affects us. Now, Dr Mulcahy, I don't know if you've got anything further to add there?
Just to say that our submission points to a survey that we conducted previously that spoke to six, twenty-six participants within the industry. And it should be noted that a vast majority of those are women and LGBTQIA+ people. So our concern is that regulation in this space will disproportionately affect women and LGBTQ+ people and that that needs to be taken into consideration in any recommendations that the committee may develop in regards to regulation of the industry at the New South Wales level.
Can I ask, I guess, what's been at the crux of the discussions today? Which has been concern about, we haven't really, actually, we haven't really spoken a lot about adult use of pornography. There's been a lot of concern and a lot of talking about education for young people and age of first exposure to pornography. I wonder, I'm interested in your opinions about, and I'm pretty sure in your introductions you were talking about, you know, concerns about young people, very young children accessing. I wonder what your thoughts were about how that could be controlled or contained or what your, what your responses to that concern is in general? So we might start in the room this time? Or we might start with Ms Devian?
Young people's consumption, you mean?
Yeah, so a big concern is, you know, we've had quite a bit of research verifying that age of first exposure is, you know, ten to thirteen years, maybe younger. I think Ms Carter was talking about thirteen being the median age. So there's been concern about, what do we do about that because, you know, children aren't equipped to deal with things they don't understand? So I just wondered what your response is to that being one of the greatest concerns about the pornography industry generally?
I suppose the area of children is not my area of expertise, but I'm more concerned about the porn performers who will be affected. I worry about introducing new sort of age verification technologies because I think that it does more harm than good to porn performers and sex workers online. And I also think that young people can easily bypass that, they're very smart. They can use VPNs, if it's like with a credit card, they can just take their parents' cards and bypass that. It's been shown to not be a very effective method of limiting people's exposure to things online. I think that I'd like to see just healthier discussions around this between parents and children. I don't think that the, the industry that I'm in should be affected by the way that young people are using the internet. I think that it's between parents and their children to ensure that they have locks on their devices and they're responsible for what they're seeing.
Thank you. Mish Pony?
You know, I'll admit that I was a thirteen-year-old who, who accessed porn, so this is not a new phenomenon. I think there's a lot of panic around porn is more accessible than it's ever been. But to be honest, I was thirteen over twenty years ago and it was still very accessible back then. So these are not new issues, it's just getting renewed attention due to people's own agendas. But I believe you might be speaking with Alan McKee at another hearing and he, his research shows that, you know, when it's young people accessing porn, there's the unintentional access. And if we want to deal with that unintentional access, we have all the, the content controls on social media, on Google, that should default to a quote-unquote "safe" setting so that you only come across porn if you intentionally go to that setting and change it, or you declare that you're over eighteen. Those controls already exist. And then when there's the other aspect of intentional access and young people intentionally accessing porn are doing so because they're curious, they don't have people that are answering their questions about sex, and that's what we need to address within school curricula, the, the questions that young people will have about sex. But I also know that you spoke with Giselle Woodley earlier today and her research shows that, you know, thirteen-year-olds and under do have an understanding that when they come across porn, either intentionally or unintentionally, that this is not real life. Where is it? It's, you know, they're able to differentiate between fantasy and reality. So I think in the same way that under-thirteens watch movies and consume other forms of media and are able to contextualise that, young people do have those skills and it's about making sure that all young people have those skills.
Thank you. I might pass over to, yes, and I think Mr Fang, you've had one.
Before I lose my train of thought, I just wanted to follow up, Ms Devian, when you were answering the chair's question about, you were talking about age verification and the risk that if poorly implemented, it could harm sex workers. And I just wanted to specifically sort of clarify my understanding. So are you talking about age verification tools that require people to provide identification documents and other things that are violating privacy as, as the risk specifically?
Yeah, and like I think that there's a concern with users on either side, whether they're performers or they're consumers, that if they're providing ID to get into websites, that their data is not going to be kept safe. We don't know who will be holding this data, if it's like a large company like Pornhub or something, and there is risks of that data being leaked. Which also I think creates shame, you know, people don't want other people to know that they're watching porn and then they may not be viewing it. I just think that, yeah, there's overall concerns with how they're housing all of that and how they're going to deal with that, and if we can trust these websites, yeah.
And I'll just follow on from that. So one of the main concerns is that if consumers want to access paid content, they're hit with an age verification wall, they have to provide identity documents of some kind, they're just going to go to some illegal site that has stolen that content that doesn't ask for their age verification and then download it through torrenting or something like that. So sex workers' incomes will be directly impacted by implementing age verification measures.
Sorry, I'll go back to it a minute.
Sorry, I know, there was questions with you too.
I can just keep going on the, the age verification and the identification. So as I understand it, Pornhub, you pay to access most of the material. Most of those sites like OnlyFans, people are paying for this material. So presumably to pay, nobody's sort of posting cash through their computer. So there would be credit card and other details that are already held. So we've already got these companies having extensive financial records. Is there any concern that that data is insecure?
In regards to that, I think because a credit card isn't really an identity document. If someone steals your credit card number, they can't really effectively steal your identity or find out who you are. Whereas age verification can't be done just with a credit card number, it requires some form of actual identity document like passport, photo ID. So it is a more invasive practice. For Pornhub, it's a mix of free content where the revenue is raised through advertising before the actual clip. But with Pornhub, you actually can't use, I believe, Visa or Mastercard because they refuse to deal with Pornhub. And so there are other payment methods which are more discreet actually than using a credit card. So that's part of a longstanding issue of, you know, financial discrimination against adult services. But yeah, to be honest, age verification will.
But in terms of data security, which was the concern that was raised, I think most people are very concerned about the security of their credit card because significant amounts of money can be stolen if credit cards are compromised. So if, if there isn't a concern about data security in relation to payment methods, I'm struggling to see why there would be a concern about data security in relation to any other details that might be provided, as frankly are routinely provided for a host of other transactions that one conducts online.
I might let Eros jump in at this point.
Okay, sure. Yeah, thank you.
Ms Carter, if I might just take us back for a moment. I think the concern is that age verification will be used at the point of entry to a website. So as opposed to a credit card that you would utilise when you're making payment for the content, people will be required to provide that data at the point of entry. And we should say at the moment, we've got a system that operates under age assurance where things are age gated and people do not need to provide that identifying information at the point of entry. Our concern is around ensuring that whatever measures are put in place are, that they be privacy protecting. So we're particularly concerned by, for example, in the Stage Two codes that are now being considered by E-Safety proposed models like facial recognition because of two things. Firstly, it's privacy invasive and secondly, it creates a real honeypot of data that would be attractive to people that are seeking to utilise that data. And we can point to Australian cases, for example, Optus or MediBank where that data's been utilised previously. So there are some real and legitimate concerns around collecting that much data at that point of entry.
Actually, Dr Mulcahy, can I take you to your submission where you discussed the online safety, Basic Online Safety Expectations Determination of 2022, which says that expectation that online providers will take reasonable steps to ensure that technological or other measures are in effect to prevent access by children to Class Two material on the website? How is it that twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-olds are able to access Class Two material on websites in Australia if that measure is effective?
In our view, they shouldn't be able to, but I think as others have stepped you through, unfortunately, children are able to find ways around, through VPNs and the like, to gain access to this material. In our view, we want to ensure that there's protections in place to ensure that children can't access that material and that's why we support things like these age-gating mechanisms. And it could be that more can be done within the age verification place, but it needs to be carefully balanced to ensure that any measures aren't privacy invasive as well.
Dr Mulcahy, could you step us through exactly what the age assurance measures are that are in place now? And any strengthening of those that you would recommend to ensure that twelve-year-olds can't be accessing Class Two material?
So at the moment, as we set out in our submission, there's an age-gating process whereby a person who seeks access to that material has to submit a declaration that they're at least eighteen years of age, that they're given a warning about the material that's on the website. They're given information around how parents and guardians may control access to Class Two material. This includes things through filters and the like and taking reasonable steps to confirm that person's age. Now, we're in the process now.
Sorry, can I just stop you there? What's a reasonable step to confirm the person's age?
So at the moment, we're in the process of, through the Stage Two codes that have been developed by the E-Safety Commissioner, working through what that might look like. Now, there are some suggestions that have been put there.
Does that mean that at the moment reasonable steps are not being taken to confirm age?
Reasonable steps are being taken to confirm age, whether they be through.
What do they look like?
They can, they can include things like, as I mentioned, the declaration that the person's above eighteen years of age, as you mentioned, through credit cards and the like to confirm that as well too. But now we're going into the Stage Two online safety regulations. There's now this discussion between industry and the E-Safety Commissioner around what that can look like. And I would also note that this is in the context of the Commonwealth Government doing their age verification trials as well too. So we're waiting to see what comes out of that. And as I've been saying, it's, it's really crucial that these, that there be measures in place to be able to confirm that a person who's accessing this is at least eighteen years of age, but also to, to protect. but also to, to protect, um, people's privacy and their data, and to avoid the situation where, um, data's being collected in a way that's privacy invasive and creates real risks or honeypots of data emerging.
Um, I understand that, uh, final draft codes were to be provided to the E-Safety Commissioner by December twenty twenty-four. On notice, are you able to provide us with a copy of what was being provided to the E-Safety Commissioner?
Yes, happily, we can do that.
That, that would be great. Thank you very much. Um.
Can I, sorry?
Yes. Please carry on, Mr. Dunn.
I, I'd just like to add that there was a delay, um, not caused by industry. Um, and I understand the E-Safety Commissioner now has those codes. And I understand there are eight different codes. Um, uh, and they were delivered on the, or about the twenty-eighth of February, and they're under the consideration of the E-Safety Commissioner. Um, that's, that's, and we're waiting for the E-Safety Commissioner to provide feedback on all eight codes.
Thank you. We might go to Ms. Con before I know there's some extra questions. Dr. Con.
Um, there was a comment made earlier in the day around this question of, um, ethical porn and whether or not there can be ethical porn. Um, I'm interested in your understanding of, um, what that would mean if there was an ethical porn industry that, um, really looked after sex workers and protected them from exploitation.
I think it's an unhelpful demarcation. I think, you know, what, what is ethical porn? Porn where workers are paid, um, there are good industry standards, um, and it's a good workplace. So, you know, when you're watching ethical porn, um, you wouldn't necessarily be able to see, oh, that scene is ethical and that scene is not ethical, because you, you're not really aware of, um, how something is produced. Same as if you go to a grocery store, you can't see, oh, that cucumber, um, has happy workers and that cucumber doesn't have happy workers. Um, but I think, you know, there is, um, uh, in order for ethical work, um, practices and workplaces to exist, um, obviously decriminalisation and effective workplace regulations, uh, that apply to any workplace equally. Um, so in New South Wales, for instance, we do have a decriminalised or largely decriminalised industry. And so there are those, um, workplace health and safety, um, measures able to be implemented in those industrial regulations. Um, so that to me is ethical. It doesn't matter if it's big porn, as people like to call it, or small independent operators, they can both be ethical, um, so long as workplace standards are good.
Um, I'd also like to add to that, that we do have, yeah, a largely decriminalised landscape in New South Wales. Um, we are able to access our workplace rights in a meaningful way, but, um, it comes back to the concern that we have about the nature of this inquiry, where we are sort of perpetuating, um, we're having discussions that, uh, pitch things as harmful and then they create stigma. And I think that when we do create that stigma, it creates barriers to people, um, accessing their workplace rights. And they are less likely to report and to, um, yeah, seek out help if they were experiencing any kind of workplace issue. Um, so if we really are concerned about an ethical porn industry where porn stars are treated with the care and respect that we want to see, um, we also need to, um, not have such stigmatising conversations around the industry.
Thanks.
Mr. Fang?
Uh, thank you. Um, it's been a day of, um, I guess definitions almost. Um, and I've heard quite a few today. Um, and I know we've spoken about, uh, ethical pornography. Um, one of the witnesses earlier was speaking about standard non-violent pornography. Um, uh, we've spoken about the different classifications and the like. Uh, I think if we boil everything down and looking back at the title of this inquiry, the impacts of harmful pornography on mental, emotional and physical health. Something you said earlier prompted me to ask this question, which was that, uh, you believe the evidence shows that, um, young people know that pornography isn't real life. Um, I think this inquiry, if we boil it down, looking at the title, I don't know there's the terms of reference, but in effect, um, the concern is, is that young people are getting their first sexual education experiences through watching pornography. How do you think we make sure that, one, young people know that a respectful, um, mutually beneficial relationship between two people um, is not typically what you would see in pornography? Um, do you agree that the majority of pornography isn't what happens between two consenting people, you know, in a, I guess, in a sexualised manner always? Um, but also, how do we, um, make sure that we do that in a way that connects to them and it doesn't push them, um, into other areas where they perhaps get misinformation, learn the wrong things, learn disrespect, et cetera? That's, I think, the, the crux of what we're trying to do today.
Um, I'll start. Um, I think that just to start, the idea of consent, what consenting adults would do is like a dangerous sort of road to go down, because, just because you or I might not consent to something, doesn't mean that two other people might not. And I think that what is described as harmful often is in kink territory, um, or, yeah, things that heteronormative sex aren't, are outside of heteronormative sex. Um, and I think our, our submission discussed something which is called porn literacy, which is, I guess, just the same as media literacy but for porn. Um, and I think that young people should be taught that porn is for entertainment, um, like movies, like video games, um, which aren't suffering as much scrutiny. So if young people are experiencing, having their first exposure to sex through porn, I think that is a failing of the education system rather than a problem with porn. And I think that they should be, parents and young people, um, parents and teachers should be making sure that young people are spoken to about sex, so that they don't go, what is this thing? And then seek it out and find something that they don't understand.
So, so do you agree then that, I guess pornography should be reserved for people that are over eighteen? That, um, the ability to access pornography under that age is potentially, um, creating a, an unhealthy, um, view of what a sexual relationship with another person might be?
No, I think whether or not someone should do something doesn't really matter, because they're going to anyway. Um, as someone who was a young person, it's natural for young people to be curious. I think that, um, people can watch things healthily as long as they have a critical eye and they understand, um, what's happening and that it's not real. And they know their own values and they're taught to, um, consume things that align with that or see things that aren't in line with their values and, um, understand that that's, yeah, not within their values.
So when you gave evidence earlier to the chair's question, um, around, uh, I guess, um, some of the impacts that, um, age verification might have. And, uh, um, my colleague, uh, Dr. Amanda Conne sort of touched on it. You indicated that age verification could potentially have, um, uh, I guess detrimental impact to the earnings of, um, of some workers. I did wonder whether you meant that by people under the age of eighteen, um, not being able to access, it would mean that, um, there's potentially a, a, a financial impact as well. Um, is that what you were referring to?
I see how that was a misunderstanding, um.
Maybe I'll forget. So, yeah, if you're a, uh, independent porn performer and you want to sell your own content directly to adults, if you have to implement age verification, you're going to have to pay money for that. Um, and then, so that's going to be a cost and maybe you can't wear that cost. So then you'll have to sell your content via Pornhub or OnlyFans, which takes a cost of your earnings. So you're really, you're squeezing out small independent producers with the cost of regulation. But then also adult consumers who have fears around their identity being stolen, um, or that, um, that it's not secure, will just not go through those paid sites and will use like torrenting platforms, which won't have age verification, or use a VPN to circumvent that to go to some other free site that is essentially stole, because, you know, there's lots of tube sites that steal the content of performers so people can watch it for free. So you're directing, redirecting people from, um, I don't know, the legal market into the, into a, into a dark, um, into a black market of porn, essentially, I suppose.
Right.
Could I ask you something? Could I ask a question? From, from the performer's point of view, from the industry point of view? And, and I, and I hear what you've been saying about the framing, so I'm, I'm interested in that. Do you, do you think there's such a thing as harmful pornography? And if there is, what are the features of that that make it different?
I think that if two consenting adults are doing something together, that's, they've agreed to do that. Um, yeah, I think that if there's not consent involved, it's no longer porn. Um, yeah.
But that's about the consent between the two people and that's one thing. But the pornography is pornography because it has an audience. So is there, i- is anything that's consented to between two people not hu- uh, is there nothing that, that, that enters that harmful kind of arena if it's published or viewed? So I see that, I see what you're saying about consent between two people. I- i- do you maintain that that's the same thing for the airing of those?
Um, I think that really, um, what I'm more concerned with is that porn is being used, uh, to sort of scapegoat a range of society's problems. I think that if people are consuming what some others might consider harmful, uh, I don't think that that's to do with porn. I think that that's to do with what's happening around us on a much broader scale.
And I think, you know, any form of media can have harmful impacts, but that's not intrinsic to the media itself. It's what the messages people take away. So there can be harmful impacts of reality TV, harmful impacts of any mainstream media. Um, but it's around, you know, making sure that we have frameworks in society that people understand, just because you see someone, you know, a high-speed chase in a movie, doesn't mean you do that in real life. Um, and so I think by having a society that normalises consent, you know, consent negotiations, um, is how we can mitigate any potential harms of people seeing, watching porn.
Can I ask, and I, I don't know, these are genuine questions. In terms of that consent aspect, what proportion do you think of porn, porn would show the negotiation of consent between two people? So again, not disputing that there is consent, but, but how often is that shown in pornographic content?
Oh, you go.
I mean, it's asking you to generalise. I'm, I'm just asking for your opinion.
There is a very limited subset of porn that does show pre-scene negotiations and post-scene debriefing, and that's part of their, um, marketing. Um, but really, nobody is accessing porn to watch the pre-negotiation and post-debrief. They, you know, are wanting, um, looking for, I suppose, the action. Um, and so I don't think there ever will be a large market for porn that shows the pre-negotiations. But in the same way that porn doesn't show those negotiations that might happen in quote-unquote real life, nor does, nor do movies, really. I've never, not seen a mainstream movie where people talk about, do you want to have sex? What kind of things do you feeling like tonight? It kind of just happens magically. Um, but what does, is often shown is mutual, um, enjoyment. And so there's a New Zealand Classification Office report from not that long ago that shows that the most popular videos do show mutual enjoyment. And I think showing, shows of mutual enjoyment is a form of non-verbal consent.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fang.
Oh, I was just going to say, um, this is where part of the problem about, I guess, the education through pornography is, is that, um, where there is, I guess, no discussion about consent in pornography. The other thing that isn't a feature of pornography is where people have a discussion about consent and agree to not have sexual relations or, you know, agree that, you know, that, that there's, um, a barrier or a reason to, to not do something, because obviously there's nothing happening. So any, any time that people watch pornography, there's obviously a, a level of action. And, um, if people view that as their, um, uh, as the mainstream normal, um, way of, of acting, um, through, you know, achieving consent, um, through, before sexual relationships, um, they're not going to actually get that other aspect because it doesn't exist in pornography. That's part of the problem, isn't it? That, that there's a whole aspect of consent that isn't even broached in pornography. Does that make sense?
I think that porn is very diverse. Um, I, maybe I misunderstood the question.
Well, you don't, you don't ever see somebody going, um, you know, you know, can, can we engage in? Of course, someone goes, no, well, actually, you know, I don't feel like it. I've had too much to drink. I don't feel like I can consent. And they go, okay, that's, you know, you're right, I should put you in a taxi, you should go home. Like, that's, you don't see that, but that's, that is what society expects. If somebody's, um, you know, vulnerable and, and not able to consent, we would expect that, that, that those conversations would occur. They don't occur in pornography. So we need to get ahead of that game, don't we? We need to say that, you know, pornography is, 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 is so far, I guess, on one end of the spectrum, but there's this whole other spectrum in relation to sexual consent. Um, you know, young people understanding what somebody else wants and consents to. That, that's not anywhere contained in pornography, is it?
But I suppose by that argument, you could say that, well, people are watching porn, so they're just going to assume people are having sex twenty-four seven, because that's all porn depicts. But people know that's not the case and they understand in their own bodies, well, I'm not wanting to have sex all the time. So they're able to critique that, well, this is just, um, video of people having sex if they want to have it.
I might, I might see if there was just one question. We are nearly out of time, but Ms. Carter.
Different question than what I was intending to ask. Everything you say sounds very sensible, until I think that porn is being accessed by eight and nine-year-olds. Do you think they have the critical faculty to say this is not life and to be able to make those judgements?
Look, I don't think any of us are saying that eight and nine-year-olds watching porn is a good thing. Um, and we're not saying that porn is a great consent educator. Porn, it's not. Um, but I think from the research that I've seen is that, uh, people, eight and nine-year-olds watching porn at that age, if it's unintentional, they might quickly see it and then close it, because they feel awkward and embarrassed and confused. And in which case, they should absolutely have an adult to talk to, what have I seen? Why did I see that? What were they doing? Um, if there are eight and nine-year-olds intentionally accessing porn, um, maybe they're very developed, uh, developed from, uh, developed, or there's something else going on in their life, um, that is directing them there, in which case I would be very concerned. Um, but, you know, I haven't seen good research, you know, any research that's, um, highlighting that as a major issue. I know it's probably an issue that, you know, family and domestic violence services are encountering. Um, and that's probably happening within a domestic and family violence context or, um, issues with development. Um, but, yeah.
Yeah, it was brought to our attention by the New South Wales Government because of the programmes they need to run.
Hmm, yeah.
I, uh, time has come to an end. Um, I thank you all very much for appearing both online and in person today and for your submissions. So thank you very much for your time. There might, I don't know if we asked, I don't know if there are things taken on notice, but there might be supplementary questions as well. The secretary will be in touch. And again, thank you all very much.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.